You can come up and just state your name for the record and then let us know what's on your mind.
Okay, thank you. My name is Deborah Ng Wong and I am a resident of Newburgh, Oregon. Today, I just wanted to just kind of encourage, implore the Planning Commission to really think about the fact that things are changing in the state. And I think the regulations that we have do not match the way that society is developing, growing, living. I live near Crestview Crossing and it just, I, there are several things I wanted to bring up. And I, and this is not about that project in particular, but this is about rules and regulations and just trying to reimagine a better way to go forward. I, I cannot believe that, that we have apartment buildings that are literally right up against the highway. It is a well-known fact, the American Lung Association doctors will tell you that anybody living close to a highway is far more susceptible to things like premature death, asthma attacks, cardiovascular disease, lung cancer, developmental damage, susceptibility to infections, worsened COPD symptoms, lung tissue swelling and irritation, low infant birth weight, wheezing, coughing, and shortness of breath. And that doesn't even begin to talk about correlations that they're seeing with other chronic diseases. I just think that it would be smart for us to have some regulations that require that there is a green space or some sort of barrier to help with the pollution and not allow builders to build right up against there. It's just ridiculous. I wouldn't want my children renting those apartments. I just, and I didn't want other people's children renting those apartments. Secondly, I know that it is obviously that we have to prepare for more people living here, more higher density housing, okay? So if that's the case, we really need to reimagine what that looks like. Because what Crestview Crossing shows is not what we can, we can do so much better than that. And I just really think we need younger people who are looking for housing to buy housing to be part of that conversation. What does it look like? We, there's just so many other options. You go to other cities and there's beautiful homes where people can live together in communities. And it could still work within the high-density things that our state is asking for. I just think we need to look beyond these cottage homes that the, that the developers are coming up with. We can do so much better. Secondly, I also don't think that, again, our regulations are keeping up with the way that people actually live. Because I have children that live in, in apartments, but apartments are super expensive. Those one-bedroom apartments at Crestview Crossing are going from fourteen twenty-five. A two-bedroom is like nineteen hundred, okay? Most young people can't afford that on their own. These are not going to be where you have one worker in those homes. You're going to have two people working in those homes. And we don't have mass transit set up for people to be able to use mass transit in our society and get to work and live here. They're going to have to have cars, okay? So if I have a two-bedroom and I have two people working there, I've got two cars, but right now I've got 1.5 parking spaces. And I have, and honestly, I think we need to keep an eye after, an eye on this project. Because after we start, after they start putting people in there, you're going to find out there really isn't enough housing. And it's not going to work according to what our regulations have. So I, I just think we really need to go back to the drawing board and think about how people actually live these days. It's different than it was back when these codes were written. And also, as far as affordable housing goes, we don't have any. I mean, you know, we have a lot of people that are on the lower-income side that actually work in Newburgh, at the stores, you know, at, at different places, the restaurants and stuff. We should have a housing available that they can afford, afford and be able to walk to work or take a bike, you know? But we don't have enough of it, for sure. And these apartments definitely are not going to be ones that they're going to be able to occupy, period. They're, they're just priced out. So anyway, that was all that I wanted to do is just to say, we need to go back to the drawing board. We need better regulations that will allow us to work within the confinement of the state. But I know we can do better. Thank you.
I was just going to say thank you. Yeah, and, and you definitely have the year commission of the commission, you have my year. I for one would like to see more green space incorporated into developments. But we are looking, you know, you brought up some conflicting issues, you know, space versus usage, things like that. So you've got our ear, those are, those are things we're, we're interested in looking at. So, thank you. Okay, next, Lisa Thomas, please.
Good evening, Lisa Thomas. I reside at eighteen oh eight Leo Lane. I'm here to talk about public records and meetings law. Upon reviewing public records for the Planning Commission meetings, I discovered a variety of inconsistencies that could be considered violations of the State of Oregon Department of Justice Public Meeting Records Law. Public records of Planning Commission meetings can be written or audio. The majority of the City of Newburgh Planning Commission meetings have both modalities, but there are exceptions. Records examined focused on meeting agendas and approved minutes available from January two thousand eighteen to May twenty, May of two thousand twenty-three on the City of Newburgh's website. Planning Commission meetings on October eleventh, two thousand eighteen, April ninth, two thousand twenty, and July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two do not meet the requirements identified in Oregon Revised Statutes and/or City of Newburgh ordinances. It is important to note that on the agenda for the October eleventh, two thousand eighteen Planning Commission meeting, there was a quasi-judicial hearing for a planned unit development and conditional use permit for Crestview Crossing. It is unfortunate that there is no audio or video record available for the October eleventh, two thousand eighteen Planning Commission meeting. It's an outlier, as it was the only meeting out of fifteen Planning Commission meetings held in two thousand eighteen that has solely written minutes. At this hearing, the public testimony from Russell Thomas caused such an impact that an emergency recess was called. There is no public record for this time during the meeting, of which the commissioners left the room together while city staff pulled up maps for review. It is not known what commissioners discussed behind closed doors, though the recess itself is noted as occurring in the written minutes under testimony for Russell Thomas. Since there is no audio or visual record publicly available, it is difficult to determine if deliberation occurred outside the public view. This is a violation of ORS one nine two point six five oh one to two. Additionally, because there are only written minutes that provide yes and no vote totals for the motion to approve, public records of the vote of each member by name are omitted. This is a violation of ORS one ninety-two point six five oh one C. A meeting was scheduled for April ninth, two thousand twenty, that is noted in, on the agenda that the meeting was canceled. No further meeting was held in the month of April. This is a violation of the City of Newburgh Ordinance number nine two two three five seven one that states meetings of the commission shall meet at least once a month unless it does not require such a meeting. Because there was an agenda set for April ninth, two thousand twenty, it can be concluded that business was required. There was a meeting scheduled for July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. According to the agenda, it would be a teleconference meeting. It does not state that the meeting was canceled, as was noted on the agenda of a previously canceled meeting. If this meeting did occur, there is no public record of the meeting. This is a violation of ORS one nine two point six five oh one to two. If this meeting was canceled but didn't, but not notice, noted as such, no other meetings were held in July two thousand twenty-two. This is a violation of the City of Newburgh Ordinance ninety-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, seven-one. I respectfully request the City of Newburgh immediately rectify all violations as, as noted above and going forward in order to comply with ORS one nine two point six five oh one C. All written records of the Planning Commission minutes should, shall be required to include the vote of each member by name on each motion. The next item I would like to address is the student representative vote. At the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three City of Newburgh Planning Commission meeting, I checked in with the city reporter to identify what commissioners were present. She kindly noted on my Planning Commission member list who was present and who was running late but would be attending. I asked if the student representative had a vote and was told no. This was incorrect information, as the student representative voted on agenda items during the Planning Commission meeting. The student representative does have a vote. This is established in the City of Newburgh Ordinance twenty twenty-one, twenty-eight, ninety-two, stating one seat will be reserved for a local high school or college student, which will be a voting position. However, I understand the confusion. As this official City of Newburgh website, Planning Commission homepage states, "The Planning Commission is a public body responsible for considering land use matters. Commission comprises of seven citizens, one student representative, a non-voting member, and a mayor, a non-voting member." I respectfully request that the City of Newburgh update their website to reflect accurate information that student representative holds a voting position on the planning commissions. Lastly.
We're coming up on over five minutes.
Okay.
If you could, a quick wrap-up, please.
I will. I just want to talk about training opportunities. It is noted in Newburgh Ordinance two thousand seven, twenty-six, sixty-nine, thirty-two, one thirty-two point five oh training that the city shall offer training to planning commissioners to educate them in their duties. It shall be the duty of any newly appointed planning commissioner to attend a basic training session from staff within thirty days of his or her appointment. It shall be the duty of any reappointed planning commissioner to attend at least a one-hour training session from staff or offered by the city within twelve months from the beginning of that person's appointed term. Has everyone been offered the training? Has the student representative? Is, is a student representative available?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Inquiring whether or not you had been offered the training that was required.
Yeah, I, I believe I have. I can look back at my email that I'm pretty sure I have. But I am a student, so if I need to go to training, it is, you know, like it's on my own time. So I can check if I was, if you'd like me to.
That'd be great.
Okay, just give me one minute.
Okay, so just to wrap it up, we, we do have a full planning commission, is that correct? There are seven members? Plus our student representative, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, we're up to the consent calendar and entertain a motion on the last meeting, some minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the consent calendar from the May twenty-three Planning Commission meeting. As written.
Have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None? Okay, the consent calendar is approved. So now the next item on the docket is a quasi-judicial public hearing. And at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the hearing. This one's to amend the Springbrook Master Plan, change the zoning from SDNC to SDMRR per eleven point two three acres, a plus or minus four or three lot. Kalina at Springbrook subdivision intended to plan a stream corridor impact for pedestrian bridge subdivision north of North Mountain View Drive, west of Hess Creek, east of North College Street, and southwest of North Aspen's Way. And a Jones change at the southeast corner of East Mountain View Drive and North College Street. Purpose is to discuss this under testimony. And when we get to public testimony, there'll be fifteen minutes for the applicant and primary opponent, and then five minutes apiece for comments after that. And I'd like to call for any abstentions, bias, ex parte contact, or objections to jurisdiction from any of the commissioners. Hearing none, Avery, could you go ahead and read the legal announcement?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. ORS one ninety-seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her application of, presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must track their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria, which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal to the case, in a, in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, L U B A, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant might request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The Planning Commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, and let's move on to staff report.
So Doug Ruck's Community Development Director began by entering the entire staff report, attachments and exhibits into the record. So the chaired indicated, this is an application to amend the Springbrook Master Plan, a zone change from Springbrook District Neighborhood Commercial to Springbrook District Mid-Rise Residential for eleven point two three acres, a plus or minus four hundred and three lot, a Kalina at Springbrook Subdivision, tentative plat and the stream corridor impact for a pedestrian bridge. At the bottom of this slide, it has all of the four case numbers. As is often the case, the clicker doesn't always work. So the applicant for this is Polish Homes, Inc. The owner is Aspen Way West LLC. The request, I already read. The location is the chaired indicated, the subdivision is north of Mountain View Drive, west of Hess Creek and east of College Street and southwest of Northwest Aspen Way. That proposed development area is ninety-eight point eight one acres. The zone change is at the southeast corner of Mountain View Drive and North College. We've listed out the tax lots that are applicable in this case. The zoning for the subdivision is Springbrook District Low Density Residential. And then for the zone change, it's Springbrook District Neighborhood Commercial. There's a variety of applicable criteria because there are four elements to this particular proposal. So we've listed those all out on the slide and they're all in your staff report as well. So we'll start with the Springbrook Master Plan. So this was a plan that was adopted in two thousand and seven. This is what is kind of generically called the coffee table book version, which incorporates all of the conditions of approval and so forth from adoption of the Springbrook Master Plan. And this was finalized in June of two thousand and eight. So the elements for the master plan amendment. First would be identifying that area that's neighborhood commercial and changing that to mid-rise residential. In the master plan itself, there's a, what's called a concept layout for what residential development would occur west of Hess Creek. And this proposal has a modified schematic layout for that residential development. There are modifications to the development standards matrix. And that's to adjustments to the low-density residential lot size, adjustments to the low-density residential lot width standards, and addition of D-tax, quadplex and also duplex standards. In that, throughout this whole entire master plan, is this development standards matrix, which is the piece that's binding. Modification of gateway features, and so there originally were some concepts for gateway features. This proposal modifies those and it modifies the location of those gateway features. And the applicant will give you a presentation that has more graphics, minds more words. Modification of the open space plan. So it's shifting open space in the middle of the Kalina to the expanded Hess Creek Preserve area, which will be on the east side of the development going down to Hess Creek. There are modifications to the transportation system plan, so it's shifting Villa Road to the west and connecting up to Aspen Way. So there's a different proposed kind of shadow road alignment to get to Aspen Way. The way the plan was originally kind of laid out, it's at that sharp curve. And you really don't want roads connecting at sharp curves or in that general location. Transportation impact modification. So this proposal, there in the current master plan, there's the dip in Mountain View going over Hess Creek. And so instead of doing those improvements, you will see that there's a pedestrian bridge that is proposed that would provide that pedestrian and bike link through that dip area in the roadway. The applicant can explain more or senior engineer. Providing their proportionate share towards the contribution of a traffic signal at Hayworth in Springbrook. And then updating the master plan to remove the need for a right turn lane pocket at College Street and Hancock Street. And so there was traffic analysis work that was done for that and coordinated and reviewed by Oregon Department of Transportation. Street scape changes. Originally, there was a masonry wall. It's now proposed to be a wood fence with masonry columns. And then there are updates, of course, to all of the infrastructure, sewer, water, storm, street layouts and so forth from the original master plan version. So ordinance number two thousand seven, twenty-six, seventy-eight was the original review of the master plan. And there were serious conditions, and so those conditions were all pulled forward into your staff report that you have in front of you this evening. And we've addressed the applicable conditions where they would need to be modified from that two thousand and seven ordinance. Quickly, so the area that's in the salmon color, the SDNC, that's the area, it's eleven point two three acre area that would be proposed to be modified to the mid-rise residential. So that's what the new designation would be. This is the general outline of the Kalina at Springbrook Subdivision. This is the zoning, so it's that SD Low Density Residential. This is the cover sheet in your packet of material that shows the layout of the proposed subdivision with that green space open area again over on the east side. And then the residential development primarily to the west of the extension of Villa Road North. So if I talked about the zoning on the property, the master plan amendment would reduce the lot size minimum down to twenty-nine hundred square feet against four hundred and three lots, plus or minus sixty-eight of those would be quadplexes and duplexes. That's that middle housing component. Overall, what is proposed complies with our average lot size standards and dimensions. So there are eight phases proposed in this subdivision. And so that's also in your staff report, so it identifies the number of lots that would occur, be created over the course of an eight-year period, so effectively a phase a year. I'm not going to read all of this, but this is the text that's in your staff report that identifies all the street extensions that would be occurring. Foothills, Dartmouth. Aldersgate gets extended north-south and so forth. So this is taking extending existing streets that are stubbed and extending those either further to the east into the subdivision or taking roads that are to the north and extending them to the south to get down towards Mountain View. The application also has a request in the subdivision on North Villa Road, which is a major collector roadway, to allow those homes on the east side of that and access out onto the collector roadway. So we've analyzed that in the applicant's packet, Kittleson and Associates provided a memo. So that's an attachment one, exhibit L. The Hess Creek Preserve and the open space. And so there would be approximately twenty-seven point seven six acres of open space and reserved area. As part of this proposal, there would be a community building with a pool, picnic shelters, seating, playground areas. And there'll be other amenities that are distributed throughout the subdivision. There's stormwater management that occurs when you create new roads, build homes. And so in your packet of material identifies where those stormwater facilities would occur. There would also be a homeowners association. There would be separate set of design guidelines that would be reviewed by the developer. And those approvals then would accompany building permits when they come in so that we know that the homeowners association has reviewed them. Prior to the final plat, there's a property line adjustment, and so the red line that I showed you in my graphic, that line's going to shift a bit to the west. And so there'll be this open space kind of from the community building and so forth that goes down it within the subdivision itself, and then it'll go on to adjacent property that takes you down into the Hess Creek Preserve area. Open space areas, so there'll be paths within that preserve area. There's also pedestrian paths that run east-west through the development. That allows for, you know, easy access for those who like to walk. So you could walk from your home on the west side and you go down a pedestrian path and get to the community building and you would not have to drive. And again, when I, earlier slide, I talked about the themed playground, you know, these lawn seating areas and that both hard and soft trails would be provided. Pedestrian pathways in the subdivision. So trying to keep that from the original master plan of keeping those pedestrian bicycle connectivity issues and concepts that are in place. And the applicant can speak more to that if you have questions. Track H in the proposal is that community building. Already talked a bit about that. And again, all the stuff that's in the subdivision, there was a kind of a master subdivision that was done with the original master plan. So ordinance two thousand seven, twenty-six, seventy-eight had conditions of approval. We pulled those forward and those are all in your staff report as well. The stream corridor, so there is a twelve-foot wide multi-use bridge that's planned that would span over Hess Creek. There, none of the improvements occur within the stream corridor area. The footprint of the bridge abutments are outside of that. There's some grading that does occur within the stream corridor that's required to be re-vegetated. And their proposal identifies doing that. So again, we go back to the two thousand and seven ordinance and applicable conditions and so forth are addressed in your findings in your staff report. There were a number of findings. I did not list out a PowerPoint slide for all of them. We'd be here very, very late. So all of the findings for the master plan are in exhibit A. And there were sixteen conditions of approval that are identified for those master plan modifications. For the zone change, those findings are in exhibit B. And there was one condition of approval, and that is addressing the issue of the trip cap that was pulled forward from the original approval. The subdivision findings are in exhibit C. And so there are conditions one through three, and then you get to condition four. And then it starts off in an alphabetical order and it goes from A to Z and then double A to double I. And then the stream corridor findings are in exhibit D. And there were effectively three conditions of approval that were in place for that. And that's to provide more clarity on the species and the size of the plantings that are proposed for that mitigation where there's some grading that occurs. Uh, that are proposed for that mitigation where there's some grading that occurs around the east side bridge abutment. So staff's recommendation on this one is to adopt planning commission resolution twenty twenty three, three, eight, eight. Which approves the requested master plan modification, zone change, subdivision, preliminary plat, stream corridor mitigation. Uh, with the attached conditions of approval that I just went through in the previous slides.
Well, thank you, Doug. And now I'll go ahead and open up the public testimony portion. And it looks like um, two of these Anna Bosich and is it Mimi Dukas representing the applicant? If you'd like to come forward and. At fifteen minutes, I give us a presentation and you might have some questions for you as well.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering here on behalf of Polish Homes, the applicant. Um, joining me is Anna Bosich. Uh, we do have our full project team here. You've reviewed the file. You know, it's a very large application with a lot of components. Um, so we're happy to answer any questions that you have. So we're joined by Mike Robinson from Polish Homes. Um, also Trevorson Kelman and Glenn Sutherland from AKS Engineering. Um, before we dive into the application, I would like Anna to take a minute to introduce Polish Homes. They're new to the community of Newburgh, and I think you're gonna be excited to see what they're gonna bring to the community.
So Polish might be new to the Newburgh community, but we've been building in the Pacific Northwest. We're celebrating our fortieth year this year. Um, we, you know, we are a production home builder, but we really do specialize in creating community. That's what we're about. We uh, take exceptional detail look at at the land that we're developing. As you can see in the pictures from the presentation. We often include uh, robust amenities, public parks, neighborhood parks. And then take a very detailed look at our streetscape and how that interacts with the pedestrian connection, bike connections and vehicular connections. So we're really excited to come to Newburgh. We think our our product offering here will um, will, you know, boast well for. People of all ages, all income levels. We like to create complete communities. Um, with homes that are of different sizes and um, different uh, you know. Cover different income levels. So uh, we're gonna show you that in our presentation and you'll see more graphic uh. Depiction of the community here in just a few minutes.
Thanks, so. So I am personally very excited to be here this evening. Um, I began working with Joanne Austin and the Austin family on the Springbrook master plan back in two thousand and two. That was over twenty years ago. I was much younger back then. Um, so she had a vision for what could happen with this property. She wanted to create a very special place in addition to Newburgh. Um, a place that will really um. Allow people to recreate, um, create a high-quality community connected with open spaces. Um, obviously she had the vision for the um, Allison Hotel and that complex. So we began working with her sketching out ideas and and how it related to the A deck campus. Um, and what's before you is the original um, master plan that we developed. As uh, Doug pointed out, that was adopted back in two thousand and seven. Uh, the family went on to build the Allison Hotel, uh, which has been very successful. Shortly after that, there was a market correction, uh, that was pretty rough on all of us. And so the project was put on hold. Um, and then in the course of time, we lost Joanne. Uh, the family was working on other things. Um, and this kind of sat back a little bit. Well, the family found a good partner in Polish Homes. They were introduced to Polish and they said, okay, this is the right group to continue on with our vision. For what we want to happen within Springbrook. So Polish began working on the master plan and trying to refine it and adapt it for sort of modern. Master plan community standards. And so what is before you tonight is the first um, residential phase of Springbrook. It's generally located um, west of Hess Creek, north of Mountain View, generally east of College Street. Um, and it's ninety-eight acres. So this is the general area. Um, this shows the polished refined plan. Uh, it still adheres to the family's original vision. It honors that Hess Creek Corridor. In fact, it expands it out, um, working in partnership with the family that will be. Um, a combination homeowners association, open space and dovetails into what what the family is envisioning as the Hess Creek Preserve. It, the residential portion still provides that variety of housing types. So we have detached homes, we have cluster homes, we have alley-loaded homes, front-loaded homes. Um, and then um. We have another component, which is uh, the master plan amendment. So uh, Doug talked about some um, numerical standards that are changing within the master plan. That's again to reflect the revised lot design. Um, probably the more noticeable piece, though, is changing the commercial uh, designation that is south of Mountain View. To mid-rise residential. Um, that allows that whole district to have a combination of attached single-family homes. And or uh, multifamily. There is a very strong market for it. There's a need in the community for um, that type of housing, and we think that's a very good location for it. Um, so that is what is being proposed. There's no development proposed for that piece of land right now. It's, it's just a land use designation change. So uh, some other development group will probably work on that component in the future. So that is a designation change. Um. It does actually generate less traffic. Um, so we think that that is a positive, particularly for the neighbors in the area. And then we also had the numerical changes, um, Doug went through before. The other primary application in the package is for the subdivision itself. So this is a rendered version of the subdivision. You can see how the open space dovetails in with the community. Um, we've got trails uh, working east-west across that long north-south area of land. Uh, we have a community amenity at a central location. It's four hundred and three single-family homes. As I said, we've got the pedestrian corridors. We're extending infrastructure as you always should do with a subdivision. Um, and so the city will get improvements to Mountain View. Um, a signal at Villa Road, uh, pedestrian crossing over Hess Creek, in addition to the local street connections. And completion of Aldersgate. Um, Mr. Rux pointed out that we are proposing a revised alignment for Villa Road. We've maintained that north-south connection, but we've shifted it towards Hess Creek. A little bit further away from the existing uh, Oak Knoll neighborhood. Um, and we've changed the connection point for how it ties into Aspen Way. It moves it further north away from the um, interior curve of Aspen. Uh, that is a much safer location. Um, and it moves it north where the topography is a little bit better as well. The Hess Creek open space area, um, we've got a series of pedestrian connections through there. There are pedestrian amenities at the trailhead connection. So those are benches and signage areas. Um, they all tie in with the community amenity, which is a clubhouse-type facility and a playground. Uh, and then it goes all the way south down to Mountain View and the pedestrian bridge crossing um, Hess Creek. So the land on the uh, Polish side, the Kalina side, uh, will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. The family will retain ownership and maintenance of the Hess Creek Preserve. So this gives you a little bit more graphic component of uh, the original master plan and the pedestrian trail corridor versus the proposed revisions. Um, we did have open spaces sort of um, a little bit more internal to the um, community and the original design. Um, the alternative that's before you tonight has expanded the width of the Hess Creek Corridor. And so um, that's why the east-west connectivity for the pedestrian corridors are very important. And it gives a a larger, more substantial open space within the corridor on the side. Uh, this shows an example of what the pedestrian bridge will be over Hess Creek. So as Doug said, it's twelve feet wide. Uh, it'll be a wood span and it ties in with the um, sidewalk system. And this is an example of the um, proposed amenity building. You can see that it's got the pool complex and building. Um, picnic shelter and it will have a playground adjacent to it, which hopefully I can click to. Ta-da, conceptual playground. Um, Polish has done a uh, video. Uh, diagram of the corridors or of the uh, project that we'd like to go ahead and run now. And we'll give you a little digital tour of the project. We'll see how technology works with this. It's a little hit or miss.
So there, there is no audio with the video, but it's just the video.
I'll, I'll be providing the audio.
Sure, good.
I will not be singing a song. So the beginning of the video just outlines what we've already seen as far as the layout and calling out some of um, the community amenities and community features. As we zoom in, we're gonna zoom in on Mountain View and Villa. As you can see, this is the, the gateway to the community. Thank you. You can see the streetscape. The enhanced landscaping on the, on the eastern or the western side of the street. And as we zoom up, we're going to see a glimpse into the Hess Creek Preserve over to the east. This is a conceptual um, look at the playground and amenity building. And as we move north into the subdivision, you'll see the trails and open space that will connect into the Hess Creek Preserve. So these ones are. Uh, will be maintained and owned by the HOA. Flying over the subdivision, as we zoom in, you're gonna see, you know, a mix of one-story and two-story homes. Um, of different sizes. And then as we kind of move south again into the subdivision. Will show you a concept of what the detached duplexes and quadplexes will look like.
And those are the middle housing?
Yes, this is just our traditional housing, front-loaded, two-story and one-story, two-car garage, three-car garage. And over to the left, you'll see more of a concept of the quadplexes and duplexes that are detached. With open space in between, so a little bit of a denser option. Now we're flying over east further. That's the storm facility at the gateway. So on the eastern side of the gateway.
So we're back at Mountain View.
Yep, we're down at Mountain View, kind of addressing the dip. And this is the pedestrian bridge over the creek. Showing, you know, it'll be large enough to address, you know, two-sided, two-way traffic. That's it.
Well, I thank you. Um, we are coming up on the fifteen minutes. We won't hold the technical difficulty times against you.
If we can hop back to the PowerPoint real quick, we have, I think, two more slides.
Go ahead. Can I, can I ask you something real quick?
Sure.
What software did you use to make that? That's very impressive.
Uh, someone much smarter than I in our office does them. I do not know what software he uses.
Um, we did receive, um. So we held a voluntary neighborhood meeting before we submitted the application. Um, this is a substantial application for Newburgh. We knew there was gonna be a lot of public interest. And we like to make sure that we explain projects to the public before we end up in a public hearing. Just so everybody understands it, they're not confused. Um, it was very well attended, uh, remarkably well attended. So we had it at Joanne Austin Elementary School. We filled the cafeteria. We had it over a hundred people. Um, a lot of what we heard about was um, traffic flow and um. Pedestrian flow from the elementary school that we were having the meeting in, uh, north into the community. So how were um. Uh, the students and parents going to cross Mountain View, which is a significant street. Um, and so that led to the addition of a rapid flashing beacon signal at college. Um, we also proposed a rapid flashing beacon at Villa. Uh, that got changed through the review process into a full signal. Um, so the north-south crossing to the school was a significant piece of feedback that we heard, we listened to, and we addressed within the application. After submission, we did receive some public testimony. Um, the Polish team reached out to follow up with those individuals. Um, in particular, they talked, uh, Anna spoke with the Oak Knoll Homeowners Association and talked through some of their concerns. So we were happy to do that. Overall, this is a project that is good for the community. Uh, it's bringing a thoughtful design into your, into your town. It's got good quality open space. It's got usable open space, amenities, good connectivity, good infrastructure, a variety of housing. Um, and we're excited to present it to you this evening. So we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. As I said, we've got our full design team and of course, we do request a uh, recommendation of approval to city council.
Um, thank you. Any, um, commissioners, have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanna say that um, I really appreciate the thought that went into the design. And the livability and the asset that it could be to Newburgh. As is the Allison.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I like that. It does look like it's um, sticking to, you know, the family's vision and a good use of green space and everything. So. Good presentation. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and continue public testimony. And I have a Mister, um, Jim Parker. Are you in support or opposition? Is there anyone in support? No, okay, Mr. Parker, come on up, state your name for the record.
My name is Jim Parker. I'm a resident of Newburgh at five oh five East Mountain View Court. Uh, not very far away. Thank you for your time this evening. This is a huge project. I am mostly in support of this. My main concern is I am strongly opposed to the zone change, and I'll outline that for you. This proposed development is misnamed and that should clearly be labeled and marketed only as a fifty-five and under housing. This proposal was initially presented to the public at the planning commission hearing I attended in two thousand seventeen. It's now twenty twenty-three, and this is still just a proposal. As outlined in the plans of Palace Homes, the residential portion of this would be built in different stages. The actual building to commence, I believe, in twenty twenty-four at the earliest. A sixty-year-old person in two thousand seventeen would be seventy by the time when the first homes was ready. For occupancy in twenty twenty-seven. That same person would be almost eighty by the time the entire development of this phase was completed. Most of the design and neighborhood features needed for an eighty-year-old are not anywhere in this proposal.
Excuse me, sir. Wh- when you started, you said fifty-five and under? Did you mean fifty-five and over?
This should be marketed as fifty-five and under.
And, and uh, but your concern is that they need to be fifty-five. I'm sorry, I'm confused by what you're saying here.
I'm saying if they're, if they're older than fifty-five. By the time this is completed, they would probably be deceased. I do not see any allowances in this plat for bus stops. The entire concept is assuming that the residents of these homes use cars and use them often. I also do not see any allowance for a fire station to serve this northwest portion of Newburgh. Since this development, it was this initially discussed in two thousand seventeen. Dozens of new homes to the north and west of Villa Street have been built and are now occupied or having been resold. I live in one of those homes. Fire service must now come from the small station on Springbrook. Across on Mountain View or up Main Street from the main fire station. The state of Oregon approved gray water systems for residential use several years ago. Yet I see no. Mention of this anywhere in this development. This is a relatively cost-conscious way to conserve water for future generations. The entire, this entire development assumes the city of Newburgh will have ample clean water for all of these new homes. But for how long? The developer's proposal to replace the current neighborhood commercial designation with mid-rise residential. Is a classic case of short-sighted bait and switch, in my opinion. They use the argument that it will help the city of Newburgh with its current deficit of high-density residential land. As per the master plant, master plan modification zone change in page eighty-four of the report. The city also has a current deficit of commercially zoned land. Albeit about six acres. There are arguments that there are current commercial opportunities at the southeast corner of Foothills Drive and College Street. There are arguments that there are current commercial opportunities at the southeast corner of Foothills Drive and College Street is falling. That small space is next to a large assisted living facility and the commercial spaces behind that currently occupied by a dentist's office and a daycare facility. This facility has been there for several years and has not seen any commercial interest. I totally disagree with the area currently designated as commercial, that is the eleven and a half acres at the corner of College and Mountain View is quote, "not located nor sized appropriately to provide a site for businesses that would best utilize the area," end of quote. College is a busy commuter road for people working in Washington County, Osboro, Beaverton, and points north. Mountain View is a crosstown feeder street to avoid ninety-nine W to the center of the city. George Fox University has built a modern all-weather lighted soccer and lacrosse field just south of Joan Austin Elementary School. The softball and soccer fields, the city Jake with Park are a few blocks south on College, not far from the location in Mountain View and College Streets. I was one of many persons to rejoice when the Spring Brook proposal was first unveiled in two thousand seventeen, thinking that this neighborhood where I live would finally have a small commercial area to serve the hundreds of households in this part of Newburgh. The only commercial vendor serving this entire area is a small grocery called the David Market at the corner of College and East Illinois Streets. The market is point eight tenths, is eight tenths of a mile from the corner of Mountain View and College Streets. It would be a leasty mile from any of the homes proposed in this new development. The Thriftway Market and Highway ninety-nine is one in, one point five five miles from the corner of Mountain View and College. From this same corner to Safeway on Spring Brook is a distance of two miles. Pedestrian bridge proposed for this development would make that much safer, but no shorter walk. I don't think that Palace Homes anticipates that a seventy or eighty-year-old person would take any of these walks to get to a grocery store for living essentials. I hope they don't anticipate that such a person would drive to the grocery store either, which is another reason why this should be labeled under fifty-five only. Commercial development in the corner of College and Mountain View would not only serve residents of these new homes, but the hundreds of households already living in the northwest corner of Newburgh. Many of us over the age of fifty-five. There is no reason the property currently proposed for commercial zoning could be mixed with some multi-level residential apartments to anchor. Any business is also there. Newburgh's commercial area has for years been stripped development along ninety-nine W. The city should not pass up this chance to diversify small commercial development. I would also point out that for all the talk on this nice proposal you've heard about community, a community center, there is already a huge community existing in northwest Newburgh with no commercial space. I would ask the developers to please don't ignore us. They're not building for us, but people there are already living and have nothing that we have commercial space. That's it.
Uh, thank you. Any questions from commissioners?
Sure. Commissioner Griffiths, it sounds like, uh, some assumptions are being made. I think one of the, uh, references you made was it should be labeled as a under fifty-five community and then references to seventy and eighty-year-olds, uh, whether their ability to drive, uh, which I don't think you thought was possible, or even walk some of those distances. Are you comfortable making those assumptions for everybody in that eight group?
Well, being one of those, I'm just speaking for myself, sir. Um, I'm concerned that for a person having to drive at all, A is a problem because the older we get, the less we should drive. As you all probably know, we do not have a good viable public transportation system in Newburgh. Yes, we have the Colorado ride. Um, I thought the, the fact that the city, um, put the senior center in the elementary school at the north part of city was a good idea, but getting there is still kind of an issue.
I don't know if I answered your question. No, it did. I just wanted to clarify where the assumptions, uh, were coming and, uh, you did that for me. Okay, thank you. That's it.
No one else? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And if there's no other speakers in opposition, I'd like to offer the applicant a rebuttal.
We have someone who wants to make a comment on Zoom.
Okay, okay. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Thank you. I'm a resident of the city of Newburgh and live at two one two eight East Kennedy Drive. Um, I also, uh, was involved in city government for a number of years as an associate planner um, with the city of Newburgh. So I'd like to let you know about that. I think this is a, an appropriate amendment. Um, th- the fact that the developer is looking at higher density next to the hospital is a good idea. I think they have put a lot of thought into this project. Um, um, I do understand the need for additional commercial. And, uh, I believe we have another proposal before the planning commission in which there is commercial zoning red against Highway ninety-nine backed by R two and R one that could be reverted. So I, I'm in support of this. I think it's a well-thought-out proposal and I commend, um, the applicant for doing what I think is a good job. That's all I had to say.
Thank you. And, um, was anyone else, or anyone else on Zoom? Okay, if the applicant would like to, um, come up with a rebuttal in closing statement?
Good evening again. Mimi Dukas from AKS Engineering. I appreciate, um, Mr. Parker's feedback. And it is always a challenge to try and find the right balance of land uses within the community and that's the planning commission's charge. This property has had a commercial designation for quite some time and, uh, the master plan has sat quiet, but the commercial piece is a little bit more independent and the family has contemplated, is there an end user for this commercial piece? And there's been no interest in the commercial site. Um, and I think that's supported by Mr. Parker's feedback that the existing commercial at Foothills is not booming. Um, it's, it's struggling for its tenants as well. Um, I'm, I'm not quite clear on the fifty-five and older housing conversation. Um, this was not listed as a fifty-five and older district. Um, but for seniors, I understand that, you know, a walkable commercial district would be quite nice. Um, but we think it's more important in that balancing test to provide, um, efficient multifamily attached housing opportunities for the community and that you're fairly well-served with commercial. Um, you've got quite a bit along ninety-nine and it's, um, you've probably got more opportunities for that in the future. In regards to gray water systems, the, the project has been designed with purple pipe. Um, that will allow for the future connection to a gray water system. Uh, the city is very committed to that, but it's not available yet. So as the subdivision is built, that purple pipe will be installed and the irrigation systems on all the open space, uh, components will be, um, designed to tie into that purple pipe system. In the short term, it will use, um, uh, traditional water, domestic water. Um, until such time, the purple pipe, um, is connected into the, into the system and then it can be converted over to gray water. So we are prepared for that when the time is appropriate. Um, in regards to, uh, the fire station and bus stops, this application was circulated to the transportation department. It was circulated to the fire department for comments and none were received. Um, and we agree with Mr. Leonard's feedback that, um, we think it's a good project and, um, appropriate for the neighborhood. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, we'd like a positive recommendation to, um, city council. And, um, we are happy to waive our, um, written record on this.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, Commissioner Newton Curtis. And, uh, oh, sorry, can I hear me? Is that better? Um, again, I think this is a, an amazing plan from what you've shown us. I, I really like it. I think, um, my question might be more for Doug actually. I'm wondering when the gray water, um, irrigation system might be available. Is that in our plan?
I'm gonna let Brett Musick, our senior engineering, answer that question.
Brett Musick, senior engineer. So the, the gray water system is referred to as, as actually going to be, uh, coming from our Otis Springs non-potable water source. There's been some improvements that have been made to get some, uh, to get some service available to the Crestview Crossing area. However, there are some gaps in the purple pipe to get it out to where this project, the Cleanest Division is at, that have not been installed as yet. So that's still, still a ways out before it'd be out to the piece. And we don't have a sense of timing at this point in time, what that would be.
So I'm wondering, are you thinking years or, you know, is thinking within five years, one year, ten years?
What I'm hearing is with the new groundwater treatment plant that's being required and the funding for that until that's fully established and identified that, it's really unclear what the rest of the water system projects might look like.
And I just would follow on with that is that, uh, a focus by the council at this point in time is the new groundwater treatment plant, which we have to have done by the first of September of two thousand and seven. Um, and so working on all the financing for that. And Brett mentioned there are some gaps. And so there is, purple pipe for Otis Springs. And so it's along ninety-nine. It goes through the development to the north of ninety-nine. It goes all the way to the roundabout at Spring Brook Road, which connects then to the portion of purple pipe that was put in when the Allison Inn was built. The gap exists between Zimry and this proposed development. And so as development occurs in the future, then that section will get in and then the upgrades and so forth, we need to do to Otis Springs. So it's, it's a little complicated. It won't happen tomorrow, um, but it is in our master plan, um, to be able to serve this area with, uh, with Otis Spring Water for irrigation in the future.
I was just going to add on to that as I recall from a meeting from three, four or something years ago that this, uh, issue was covered in, in one of our plans that where the, the, um, non-potable water, uh, was going to be expanded in a network that almost went up most of the hill as if I recall on the map correctly. And so that would be covered with, with this. So that was all I was gonna say. Any other questions from commissioners?
I had one question, Commissioner Quinn. Um, I heard a couple of times and what Mr. Parker brought up as well was the public transportation concern. Has, has the family, um, expressed any concern about that themselves or are they open to exploring that a little further, given the extreme density this would add to the existing area? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so at this time, go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the hearing and move over to final comments from staff and recommendation.
I would just like to echo, uh, Commissioner Capri's earlier sentiments about how well, uh, how good of a job that the applicant has done on this and, and the presentation and their overall concern for the community. That's the kind of developers we need around.
Uh, thank you. And along with those lines, I'd like to add, um, no project is gonna get a hundred percent and hit all the points for everyone, but this one comes pretty close. So, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to be in favor of it. Um, anyone else?
I would second that.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Um, I don't know if you can hear me, but yes.
Thank you, Avery.
Okay, thank you. And with that, the, uh, motion passes unanimously. And, uh, I'd like to thank the, um, applicant and good luck moving forward. Test. Oh, that's good. Okay. Okay. Yeah, that, that sounds much better. Okay, and this is a continuation of a hearing from our, um, last meeting. And as I was saying, as there was, um, another notice sent out and everything, I'm going to open it basically as a, um, as a new, um, hearing. So, uh, first gonna state the purpose and this is to look at a continued request for a major modification of a previously approved planned unit development and conditional use permit to construct one hundred ninety-six multifamily dwelling units and eight multifamily structures. Again, uh, we'll have a fifteen-minute, um, time allotted to the, uh, applicant. And then after that, we'll take, um, public testimony. Please try to limit, um, to five minutes, um, when you're called. And, um, I'll call for any abstentions or bias or ex parte contact or objections to jurisdiction. Oh, sorry.
Now it is? Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Test, test.
You just yours. Test.
Test. Oh, we're good. Okay. Um, Avery, if you would read the, um, legal language, please.
O R S one ninety-seven point seven nine seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to, wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, L U B A, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level, level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The, the law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the, to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail to allow the government or the county to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant might request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Avery. And, uh, now let's turn to staff report.
So the, the introduction in the staff report is a continuation of the hearing that we've had previously. And so what I'll be highlighting today is for this file number in this application is going to be what has happened since the last hearing, since this was continued. So again, it's just a general reminder, this is an applicant, uh, the applicant here is JT Smith Companies. Owner is Newburgh Crestview LLC. This is a request for a major modification of a previously approved planned unit development, which has file number P U. This is a request for a major modification of a previously approved planned unit development, which has file number P U D eighteen dash zero 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 one and conditional use permit C U P eighteen dash zero 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 four. And the applicant is requesting to construct one hundred ninety-six multifamily dwelling units in eight multifamily structures. The location here is northwest corner of Highway ninety-nine West and East Crestview Drive, that tax lot R three two one six A C one three eight zero zero. The zoning designation of the site is a combination of C two or community commercial and R two medium density residential. I see what we were experiencing before with the clicker not working. It moved, okay. So I wanted to highlight some of the items here, just the items that have happened since the last hearing, so for example, on May fifteenth. Uh, May fifteenth, staff mailed the additional mail notice that was discussed at the last meeting, that's included as attachment ten in your materials. On May twenty, uh, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-third, the planning commission agenda packet was published and that included an update to the project website, including the most recent materials that are also part of this, so that would be all of the attachments that have been added to the staff report since that um republished the staff report. Supplemental packets were distributed to the planning commission after that date, and those included a June second supplement that provided a rebuttal presentation and revised site plans from the applicant team. On June fifth, there was another supplement that was distributed that included one additional public comment. And then on June sixth, staff provided an additional responses. So in response to the modified site plan, staff evaluated some of those modifications and that was what was included in this uh in the June sixth supplement and then cut off on the bottom of the screen there, but I'll make sure everyone hears it via June eighth, we had four additional public comments were distributed today, so those went to all the planning commissioners and the hard copy package be received. So highlighting what was in that staff evaluation from that June sixth supplement packet, the some of the highlights were related to parking coverage, combined lot and parking lot coverage, parking spaces, landscaping coverage. So those were some of the main things that changed in the site plan. And so when staff responded, we were trying to highlight what what was it that the applicant had submitted? And obviously, they have a rebuttal presentation that they'll be presenting information on and they'll be able to hit that and in the way that they choose to do so. But for parking coverage, it changed that parking coverage that had previously been thirty-four point nine percent, brought that up to thirty-six point three percent. The combined lot and parking coverage together had changed from sixty point seven percent to sixty-two point one percent. The number of parking spaces on the site went from two hundred eighty-two to two hundred ninety-five, and the landscaping coverage on the site went from uh changed to a total of twenty-eight point five percent of the overall site, which was eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-two to eighty-six thousand two hundred and forty-nine square feet. So one of the things that that supplement included too was going over the findings and how those findings were modified as a result of some of these changes. So with respect to the parking spaces going from two hundred and eighty-two to two hundred and ninety-five spaces, because of that modified proposal now exceeded the the minimum number requirement that had previously been identified as two hundred ninety-four. There's no longer a request for modification needed under the P U D regulations. And so this also on the right-hand side of the slide highlights where those four areas in the site plan were modified, and so the applicant in their rebuttal, this is actually part of their rebuttal presentation slide, highlighted in gold where those occurred. Landscaping coverage similar happened in similar areas, and so as a result of those parking coverages, there's a loss of landscaping at those. Um, and and also as a result of that, the site still exceeds the minimum requirement for landscaped areas. So the minimum requirement is fifteen percent of the lot and they have twenty-eight point five percent of the lot covered as a result of modification of the cycling. So lot coverage, parking coverage and combined coverage, so here trying to show this is a tabular format and exactly what changed. The initial proposal had changes uh did not change the lot coverage. Parking coverage went from thirty-four point nine to thirty-six point three. The combined lot and parking coverage went from sixty point seven to sixty-two point one. So as a result, what this means is that this modified proposal still exceeds the parking coverage that we found before, so that aspect of it did not change. The uh the combined lot coverage, the combined lot and parking coverage is still below the minimum, the standard, so it still meets it. So and I wanted to go ahead and highlight on this slide, the what this is related to as a bit of a review, so that uh criteria fifteen point two four zero point zero two zero I under general provisions, modification of certain regulations. I'm not gonna go ahead and read this whole thing, but what this does is this is the part where the applicant has asked for additional flexibility based on the P U D track that has been uh taken for this development. And because the modified proposal meets the requirements for the minimum number of parking spaces pursuant to fifteen four four zero three zero, the maximum allowable density for planned unit developments pursuant to fifteen point two four zero point zero two zero F and the maximum combined parking and lot coverage pursuant to N M C fifteen point four zero five zero four zero B three. The planning commissioner, the hearing body in this case, has the authority to grant the modification if it chooses to, under the modified proposal. And so that's kind of calling out some of those portions here where this provision allows that modification of the lot front depth width coverage. And it may be modified by the hearing authority, provided the proposed development will be in accordance with the purposes of this code and those regulations. So with that, on on this next slide, we have land unit development regulations and the the purpose from those, and so that comes from the municipal code section fifteen point two four zero point zero one zero. And these are each of these, these are all highlighted in code, and again, I'm I'm not gonna read the whole slide for everyone, it's in the supplement. And um it's here for your general kind of a reminder of what that that purpose would be for this regulation. So the uh the points I wanted to highlight here with respect to the number of parking spaces required, the the modification of the site plan and the parking coverage still remains uh over the threshold that is allowable, but the purpose behind those when when considering whether or not to allow flexibility with parking coverage would be related to parking spaces themselves as well, and so this one I will go ahead and read in. So is to under, sorry, under fifteen four four zero, sorry. The purpose of the development standards evaluated in site design review, which include parking coverage and minimum number of required parking spaces is, quote, to promote functional, safe and innovative site development compatible with natural and man-made environment. The following provisions are intended to discourage unsightly development, improve the quality of new development in the city, coordinate the site planning process with existing and proposed development, and provide a pleasant working and living environment in the city. Furthermore, these provisions are intended to coordinate the site development process through review of the architecture of the structures, signs, landscaping and other design elements of the site. So not just the purpose associated with the planning unit development track, but also those development standards that are being evaluated and considered flexibility. And that's all I have for you in this presentation.
No, thank you, so we'll go ahead and get back to the public testimony portion. And I'd like to invite the applicant up, um, you have fifteen minutes, please state your name for the record.
We're gonna do our rebuttal presentation now. Right, but just it's named rebuttal presentation.
Just a quick point of order, um, because we have other new testimony, you'll be given another chance of rebuttal later as well.
Great, thank you. My name is Mercedes Sarah, I'm with Three J Consulting, representing J T Smith Companies, the applicant. Our address is nine six zero zero Northwest Nimbus Avenue, Suite one hundred Beaverton, Oregon nine seven zero zero eight. So let's see if it'll work for me, all right, as Mr. Downing presented, we went back to the drawing board after the last hearing to see if we could make the parking minimum match the requirement. So we looked at four areas here to see if there were spots that could be added. The requirement is two ninety-four and we had previously had two eighty-two and we were able to revise the site plan to get two ninety-five. We did that in a number of ways, and the northern lot, we reduced the dog park that is proposed. Relocated the northern driveway, which was an existing driveway, we were trying to tie into on Crestview rather than move the driveway. And we provided more compact stalls, particularly along that left boundary there uh west of by the park. We reduced the open space down by the field house to add in two more stalls and then we were able to add in one more stall at the southwest boundary. As Mr. Downing stated, we did have to reduce the open space, however, we are exceeding the open space requirement um nearly double the amount that is required, which is four forty-one thousand three hundred square feet, we are providing eighty-six thousand two hundred and forty-nine square feet, that includes a dog park, a field house with recreation amenities, uh green spaces between each of the buildings, uh some entry spaces.
In full, Jesse Nemec with J T Smith Companies, I also kind of while we're on that um point, I wanted to ma- mention that we also have um a pretty substantial retrofit to the existing Spring Meadow Park that we will be doing as a part of this, since we are directly adjacent to Spring Meadow Park, I've been working with Shalen Park and Rec, and we've got a whole plan to um add a number of trees, rehabilitate the lawn, things like that, so.
In the last hearing, there were a lot of questions about what the conditions are between the two, between the properties and the neighbors' property. Uh, on the left side there, you'll see the approved Crestview Crossing as originally approved. Uh, the original approval featured a public road stub to the west, which would connect through to the south, connecting all of the west side of Crestview Crossing. The homes had ten-foot rear yard setbacks and they were three-story homes. In the new or in the right side, you'll see what is built and what is being proposed. Um, the new street is now a private street, which would only serve the four homes, it does dead end there. There is a storm facility rather than a row of homes. There is a fifteen-foot setback between the closest single-family home and the property line there on the north side. And twenty-two foot setback from the multifamily building to the property line. All of the single-family homes along the north are actually one-story homes, and then the multifamily would be three stories. And this is just to zoom in here, uh, there were some questions about what the distances were between the homes and the amenities on site. The nearest home and the northwest home on Crestview Crossing are fifty-five feet between those two homes, there's a forty-five foot depth between the end of the private drive and the nearest home and a fifteen-foot uh setback between the private drive and the property line. The nearest home is fifty-five feet from the storm pond and the multifamily building would be eighty-five feet from the nearest single-family home on an adjacent property.
So a big point to drive home there is that we we pulled this development further away from the existing.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question real quick, the what is the height of the proposed multifamily building there at the bottom?
Uh, we were
Thirty seven, thirty-seven feet, yeah, it's a three-story building, just like it was previously approved.
Thank you.
Uh, in the last hearing, there were questions about what facilitated the need for a stormwater pond on the site and the location where we had previously proposed houses, that came about through the permitting process. Um, it was found that there was a stormwater pipe that was being discharged on site of untreated stormwater from the adjacent uh neighborhood. That swale treats seventy-two, seventy-seven point two acres of off-site storm basin shown here in the purple. Uh, it's a little hard to see, but um you can see there, it says the northwest off-site basin. So that treats that basin on this site, and then it also treats the four homes that are just north of the storm pond. Um, it did result in a loss of four of the lots uh as Crestview Crossing was being built. We'd be happy to take any questions, we really thank you for your time tonight, um, we thank Mr. Downing for his staff report.
Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Griffith, I have a question. It appears that the parking that is to the west, if I recall, was chain all to all compact?
That's right, we were trying to avoid doing a full compact stalls in large swaths because of the nature of parking on a large site like that, we were able to fit in more stalls and do some compact parking, I think it's thirty-eight total compact stalls.
Which is a very small percentage of the
That's right, out of two hundred and ninety-five, there's thirty-eight.
But they're all located to the west.
That's right, we chose to locate them kind of away from the units to provide the larger stalls closer to the units where people would be able to access their own units, these might be more suited to guests or people who choose to walk further.
Is it realistic to expect that people with compact vehicles will park in the most inconvenient location instead of in front of their building?
Well, there's there's also the the requirement, we need to make a number of these stalls E V ready so that that can be designated as electric vehicle parking as well, which are generally smaller.
Okay, my electric vehicle would not be a compact car. There were some other questions from the previous meeting that I don't remember being addressed, and that was why there is no modification to the requesting building uh either in height or in number that would not require a waiver, you simply reduce the number of units, and not only could you come into uh below the thirty percent. And it would require no waiver, but why are we continuing with the same, it sounds like we're trying to maximize every unit we can get in there. Uh, and then requesting parking waivers as part of the process.
To to be clear, we're not, we're no longer requesting a parking waiver, we don't need it, we need the minimum, and um again, the the overall project is a reduction in density as uh the city of Newburgh defines density. And um we do have to be efficient in how we build it, so uh we're trying to provide as much needed housing as we possibly can.
And what I referenced uh was the parking percentage. You are exceeding, you're requesting an exceedance of the thirty percent, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And not only requesting a variance for that, it's increased.
So so that's the the lot coverage, however, I feel that's that's justified in the fact that we're more than doubling the required amount of open space. We're providing more than twice as much green space as required for this project. So there's a very small amount of um lot coverage that's allowed for parking in drive aisles, and I personally question, there might be it might not be a perfect calculation for how that's determined, but in this particular case, the idea is that you don't want too much parking, but what we've done has been very efficient with the amount of rooftops, so and we've provided adequate parking per the code and more than double the green space.
Just to add, one of the tricky things about the site is that it's long and skinny, uh which does require more drive aisle space, which is part of the parking lot calculation. Um, if when you come off of the drive, there's also not parking located right at the entrance uh for safety, so that area is counted as parking lot, even though there isn't parking, it's just kind of the nature of the site that it's a an awkward design to get into the site and put parking right where all of the drive aisles are, we chose to pull it away from some areas.
Another question I had at the previous meeting, I didn't hear addressed. Uh, although not required, I was under the impression that the initial application that happened many years ago, there was a a statement made that there would be twelve affordable housing units. Then there was uh an explanation for the elimination of those affordable housing units based on the construction excise tax of which has been rescinded. So will we see the addition of the twelve affordable housing units? As initially stated uh years ago, when this was asked to be approved.
We've we've been informed that um with the payment of the uh construction excise tax, which a substantial amount has been paid, that we will not be getting back. Um, that that has allevied our our obligation uh for providing D D restriction homes and the sheer nature of what it is that um we're providing is more affordable. is more affordable than a deed restricted house.
I'm not trying to sound argumentative. However, uh, I don't necessarily agree with the entire altruistic perspective here that this is all for affordable housing. As I said, I've asked the question and not received the answer. Why can't we reduce the number of units? So we are not asking for a variance in the percentage of parking.
Okay. Again, it's, it's lot coverage. So um we're we're trying to provide needed housing. We're less than the previous density. And we are providing affordable homes and we know that, that the city of Newburgh, based on the needed housing or the uh, housing needs analysis proves exactly that we do need um more multifamily land in the city and we're providing that. And um I don't know the point escapes me. Oh, I guess my, my last point that I was going to make is that um, we do build homes that qualify for section eight subsidies. In fact, about fifteen percent of our units in other communities are section eight. Um, are, are receiving section eight vouchers. So we are providing affordable housing through that avenue as well.
But not in this location.
Why not?
You're not.
Good.
What I heard you say, what you provided, but you're not.
Microphone, Commissioner.
Sorry. That you're, you provide it with other buildings that you do, but not in this particular case.
No, we, we, we expect that we will be having residents with section eight uh, housing subsidy vouchers.
It's just not built yet. So he was saying, we provide him in other places. This will also be eligible for that.
Yes.
This particular.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe I'm confused, but you said you provide section eight housing. Isn't that a subsidy from the government based on someone's income? What, what do you specifically do to provide section eight housing?
Build housing that qualifies for that subsidy. Not, not all housing does.
Any other questions?
Mister. Uh, could you do me a favor and bring up the slide from uh? I'll, I'll tell you when to stop. It's probably about three slides back.
I don't know if I can.
Okay. Bear with us.
Which one are you looking for?
Uh, it was not the close-in view, but the one that zoomed out a little bit of, of the, the four houses and the multifamily below it.
Sure.
Commissioner Dale, I wonder if I could throw in a quick question while we pull that up?
Please.
Um, just out of curiosity for especially that far west-facing one that has the extended long parking, are, are those assigned by unit? Or is that all open and free to any particular? That it's not assigned to any particular um, apartment?
Yeah, good question. The, the property management team will number all of the, of the parking stalls and some of them will be assigned. And then some of them will be um designated as um free for anybody to, to, to use and will typically assign parking stalls for um, residents closest to where they actually are. And then the remainder is open for guest parking. That, that portion of the plan hasn't been developed yet.
Okay, thank you. I was just concerned as if the one group all got the can, the, the compartment size. So just trying to make sure we come up with a point that would kind of make that dispersal that not one group. Because then that could be very difficult to have a compact.
Uh, so bear with me. I'm going to get from point. So the concern I have, I believe, is brought up by Ms. Thomas in part of her last meeting, but she can correct me if I'm wrong. We're to have time to go over. Is this building combined with these lots here? And I believe she brought it up as well as in the standard of the height difference between something this tall and houses that are existing that are this tall. And she mentioned a wall for dividing purposes. And I uh, I see what you've tried to do with the, with the overall development by having this here and have it away from the lots like that. Uh, I'll, I'll be corrected on this if it's wrong, I'm sure, but uh, there's some open space here or yard space and then there's, I believe, houses here. And then this is the park, as you mentioned. And then uh, I believe the park continues on down for this building here, which we can't see. And so my question to you is, are you open to building a wall for that purpose in this area to shield the existing residences from this building?
So just to clarify right now, there, there are trees and hedges proposed along the boundary. Um, just on the landscape plan, a wall would potentially remove some of those, just as a point of clarification. So I don't know if Jesse, you have thoughts to add about that?
If, if you can't think of it right now, we'll have time to rebut and you can talk amongst yourselves because I, I, we're going to be here a little while. So.
Agreed. Um, yeah. So what we found with the uh, the wall that we built um, along the northern property line between those single-story homes. The foundation for a block wall is very substantial. And um, as Mercedes pointed out, it will reduce some of the ability to put landscaping back in there just because it was, if I remember correctly, a six-foot wide footing.
O- okay. Alternatively to a uh, physical wall, how about a vegetative wall, you know, poplars? Something of that nature to do to accomplish the same effect essentially. Are you, are you open to that sort of thing? Should it be determined that that's necessary?
Absolutely, yes.
I will add again that um, just because I'm familiar with the landscape plan, those are all evergreens planted along the boundary now. So uh, removing those for poplars would be a deciduous tree, just as a point of clarification.
I, I was just using that as.
Yeah.
Yes.
We, we, we'd be happy to increase the density of the taller evergreen trees along the western and northern boundary.
My mental inventory of tall, skinny trees is very limited. I apologize.
Understood. Just want to make sure evergreen trees were planted there purposely to provide screening.
If there are um, no other questions, um, thank you. And we'll move on um, to public um, portion. Is there anyone that identifies as a principal opponent? And if you'd like to come up and take the, take the first section then, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Hello again, Lisa Thomas. I'm at eighteen oh eight Leo Lane, Newburgh, Oregon. Thank you for continuing this quasi-dual hearing. Um, you are correct, Jason, about the property there. I'm just going to address that first before I go into this. Uh, our property um, is R1 zoning. They're two-story houses on the majority of the cul-de-sac of Leo Lane. Our property in particular, um, at that corner were pie-shaped because of the cul-de-sac as well, as well as the lot next to us. So the difference between the boundary with eighteen twelve Leo Lane, which directly abuts Crestview Crossing. And then our property, our post is on that property line as well. But because they're pie-shaped lots, the back corners of our lots within, if you run down the fence ten feet, there's only a few feet difference actually, even though there's two different properties there. But we do have a corner post on that property. Um, it's eighteen twelve Leo Lane, eighteen oh eight Leo Lane, the park, and then Crestview Crossing. So that one post hits all four. So anyway, um, I'll continue on. I've been circling back to that in a minute. Okay, first of all, thank you for recognizing that the previous meeting um, did not meet the legal requirements for notifications. And the notification was sent out. I see a big difference in public occupying the seats. So that, that's a good thing. Um, it says a lot about your integrity and I really do appreciate that piece. Um, I'm going to briefly expand on the history of the Crestview Crossing project and the modi- outline the modifications that have been granted, reflect on the importance and value of the city of Newburgh municipal code and provide arguments as to why the application should be rejected. Our new, our numis- num- excuse me, our Newburgh municipal code referred to as NMC has been a work in progress, progress since its inception in eighteen ninety-three. It is a working document that has evolved and improved over time as we understand the science behind building smart, how to best meet the needs of the citizens of Newburgh and grow within the frame, framework of our existing master plans. I will remind that Crestview Crossing annexation request provided official statements, declarations and plans when they were presented to the citizens of Newburgh in the Yamhill County Voters' pamphlet. The citizens of Newburgh utilize this information in order to cast their vote and pass measure thirty-six one fifteen in two thousand and seven. Trust was given to the city of Newburgh that the Crestview Crossing development would proceed as stated. Public trust involves a relationship between the citizens of Newburgh and the city of Newburgh. The concept of public trust relates back to the origins of democratic government and its seminal idea that with the public lies the true power and future of society. Therefore, whatever trust citizens place in its officials must be respected. Five specific features were highlighted in measure thirty-six one fifteen and annexation request and subsequent arguments in support by JT Smith, by Jeff Smith of JT Smith Companies LLC and Ella Goldner, the property owner, on the benefits that Crestview Crossing would bring. These items, items were identified as a proposed zoning of R1 northern area, hundred and seventy feet of the property, R2, two hundred and twenty feet and C2 on the southern portion of the property. The quantity of homes to be built and the maximum number of dwellings as sixteen homes that would complement existing neighborhoods, up to thirty dwellings overall. Homes were to be built by a local, well-known home builder. The project would provide well-paid construction jobs performed by Newburgh companies, protection of existing green space and establishment of additional open space with landscaping, economic benefits, including the creation of jobs for Newburgh as preparation and construction begins. Then once Crestview Crossing is completed, Newburgh area citizens would find work at the high-end commercial businesses making up the business area and that it would create living wage jobs for Newburgh citizens who will become employees of the new shops and stores. Crestview Crossing had a unique opportunity to create a beautiful, comprehensive development that complemented the existing neighborhoods and businesses at the very gates of Newburgh. Unfortunately, due to extensive modifications granted by the city of Newburgh, this project no longer resembles the vision that was painted so eloquently when it was proposed to voters for annexation approval. The city of Newburgh has been quite generous in granting modifications to substantially increase density and height with an increase to eighteen single-family homes, two hundred and thirty cottage homes and fifty-one multifamily homes as well as to allow C2 commercial community commercial units to be built on R2 zoned land that abuts existing R1 properties. Homes are built by Chad E. Davis Construction out of Forest Grove, who is using Booner Construction as their roof out of Oregon City. Instead of retaining the existing wetlands, Crestview Crossing chose to purchase wetlands offsite, fill in portions of onsite wetlands and remove some of the areas they had identified as creation of wetlands on the parcel. In fact, that's where that parking lot is. Uh, so if you look at the key map that was done by AKS, you'll see it in the exhibit three, exhibit B three A key map. It's in there. So the, the economic benefits touted in the annexation request are but a shadow of this proposal. An article in the Newburgh Graphic published March sixth to twenty twenty-three titled More Businesses Sign On to Inhabit Locations at Crestview Crossing. They listed Starbucks, Five Guys Burgers and Fries, Bedmark, T-Mobile, On Point Credit Union, Grace Craze and Maud Pizza as some of the businesses that will occupy Crestview Crossing. According to indeed.com and classstore.com, the food industry companies listed in the article often utilize part-time positions with an average starting hourly pay of less than fifteen dollars an hour. All in all, I think it's a stretch to qualify any of these tenants as high-end businesses. Will these employees be able to afford a home in Crestview Crossing? The simple answer is not likely. The annual sour salary for a person working full-time at fifteen dollars an hour is thirty-one thousand two hundred dollars a year. According to the illustration provided by Three J Consulting titled Affordable Housing, a household with an annual income of seventy-three thousand seven hundred dollars would be able to afford a two-bedroom apartment, not a home, with a monthly rent of one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. A person working in the fast food industry, nursing assistant, substitute teacher or carpenter are used as examples will not qualify to rent a two-bedroom apartment. So let's discuss those development fees. What was paid to the city and what wasn't? On Tuesday, September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen, the city of Newburgh received a conditions memo from the applicant's attorney. The applicant proposed modifications to several conditions relating to SDC credits. On May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the applicant reminded the planning commission that they had received a substantial reduction of SDCs, noting fifty percent of the development was complete and the city considered that what had already been paid in a sufficient amount. Do these actions inspire public trust? Are they in the best interest of the citizens of Newburgh? Commissioners, you have an opportunity today to begin to restore public trust in this process. Please reject this application for a major modification of a previously, previously approved planned yellow, planned unit development and conditional use permit to construct one hundred and ninety-six multifamily, multifamily dwelling units and eight multifamily structures, a project that began with sixteen family homes to three hundred and eighty-six units in the form of apartment buildings is too much. Words matter. There's a reason on this agenda that it bears the words major. There's a reason on this agenda that it bears the word previously approved. So here we are with JT Smith Companies LLC making another request, this time for a major modification, a modification that would further override the voters' wishes for this parcel. I'm not surprised. Why? Because JT Smith Companies LLC is quite aware of the precedent that the city of Newburgh has set. Some of these modifications have eliminated commitments that the developer made to citizens of Newburgh and there is no accountability or pushback from the city of Newburgh. We just move on to the next modification request. Does this method foster public trust? Furthermore, this major, major modification application from JT Smith Companies LLC creates new issues that involve a request for a waiver of required parking. Let's talk about this. Did he say June sixth, they submitted additional information? Today's June eighth. How much time did we have? I spent a lot of time on this. I looked at the site several times. I've downloaded. I've taken notes. So I come with something to say to you guys, but then I find out, oh, no, and this is what's happened all along. They've now submitted new information making them in compliance with our Newburgh mu- municipal code. So I'm just going to go ahead and read what I had prepared. I just wanted to point that out. As acknowledged by the city of Newburgh staff and JT Smith Companies LLC at the May eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, this plan does not meet the city of Newburgh parking requirements. What did we hear from the city planner during this meeting regarding this matter of insufficient parking? We hope you'll work with us. In other words, we know this criterion has not been met, does not meet NMC, but we hope you, the planning commission, will let us do it anyway. This is a disservice to our existing code, a disservice to the citizens of Newburgh, a disservice to the planning commission, and if approved, a disservice to the citizens that will occupy these apartments. The city of Newburgh has provided hundreds of pages supporting this modification request. One document titled Applicable Criteria Fifteen Point Two Two O Site Design Review, NMC Fifteen Point Two Two Oh Point Oh Five Oh B two Parking and Onsite Circulation says the following. The proposed project would provide two hundred and eighty-two parking stalls, which is twelve stalls or fourteen one point or four point one percent below the minimum. Below the minimum number of parking spaces. We hear this may have changed. The sentence could not have been worded. I mean, it, it could have been worded better, yes, because words matter. Note, this citation uses the word minimum. So this was a request to allow JT Smith Companies to develop this property with less than the minimum amount of required parking. The plan does not meet the criteria outlined in our NMC, even with what I'm hearing tonight, though I have not had a chance to review it. We all have been parking lots with those tiny little spaces. As far as I'm concerned, it still does not meet the criteria. But here's where the magic happened. Okay. The city of Newburgh Staff Report on page forty stated, "As proposed, the project seeks to provide less than the minimum number of required off-street parking spaces." And it continues, "It is recommended that the hearing body allow the requested modification of the minimum number of required parking spaces. The criterion will be met if the aforementioned condition of approval is adhered to." What does that mean? It means plainly stated, it does not meet the criteria. We acknowledge that it does not meet the criteria. However, if you agree it meets the criteria, it will meet the criteria. There you go. I respectfully request the Newburgh Planning Commission reject the application for the major modification as this applicant has not met the criteria for parking as outlined in N M C fifteen point two-two oh point oh five oh B two and noted by the city of Newburgh in their staff report to the Newburgh Planning Commission. Now I hear that they're going to take away some green space areas, a smaller dog park.
I'm running out, bumping up on the time limit. If you could go ahead and wrap up.
Okay.
That's acceptable. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, approval of this modification would bring additional questions that are cause for concern. The proposed plans do not identify the location type or style of parking lot lighting. Will the proposed development meet N M C fifteen point four-four oh point oh six oh E Parking Area and Service Design Improvements? The N M C states, "Any lights provided to illuminate any public or private parking area shall be so arranged as to reflect the light away from the abutting or adjacent residential districts." The door is open for another modification request. When you add in the structure lighting on building number one A three, it's a biggie, right? This is what's going to be placed within twenty-two feet of my property line. How far is twenty-two feet? These first row of seats are about twenty-two feet from you. Now look up thirty-seven point four inches. Is that what you want to see from your property?
Miss Thomas, ask a clarification. So you mentioned your property line is twenty-two feet. How far is it from your structure? Do you know that?
I do not know that.
Give or take? Ballpark?
Uh, pie-shaped lot. So I think this picture's going to show it now.
If I was looking at it correctly, I'd guess about seventy-five or eighty, but.
No, I don't think so.
Not that much? Okay.
No, no, because there's probably only seven feet between the the side of our house and the eighteen-twelves property line.
Okay.
I mean, it's close. And then whatever the distance is at that point of the pile. Remember, these are pile lots.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So anyway, so I'll show you this. This.
Thank you.
Yes, this is our common fence post right here. This blue board is twenty-two feet. That first row of seats, see where that blue tape is? That's about twenty-two feet. It's close. It's very close. Okay, this is a wetland that was destroyed, but it's growing back, as you can see, is very much a wetland area. And it's also overcoated, about four feet tall here. So anyway, this is the building. It's the biggest one. Okay, twenty-two feet. Now you've got lighting on those second and third stories. And you've got parking lot lighting next to it, right? Now that portion of the park, I'm not sure what's happening with that, since they said that they're working with the park department regarding development. That's the natural portion. That's natural vegetation. There's no trails. It's very much overgrown. It's a wetland area. There's tons of wildlife, still less than from when the construction started, but we still have a lot of wildlife back there. But also, what happens when you put this building in this close? You light it up. Now you have illuminated a section of the park. It's going to be a draw. You're going to have new adolescents. It's going to be a draw. We've already had arson back there. We've already had a teen suicide back there. So the lighting concerns me, not just for the wildlife, but for people. Also, when you put a building this close to other properties, you we do have to talk about solar access and scenic view vista. I don't think that it meets that criteria personally. I looked at some one design that Three J's put out. I I don't buy. It's only going to cast a five-foot shadow. I don't. Also, regarding the buffer. Remember, when this project was proposed at one of the original meetings, J T Smith showed plans to us and their cohorts that there was our property line. There was green space. There was a wall, and there was a road, and then there were buildings. There weren't even any buildings adjacent to our R one zoning. Wasn't there? It looked great. We said, yes, let's do it. We knew the property was going to be developed. We thought they would be responsible. We thought they would follow through with the vision that Ella Goldner had. That didn't happen. And you know, regarding the previous agenda item, what did I see? I saw a developer working with the owner, working with the citizens. Looks like they're going to build a beautiful project. This was a missed opportunity. And it only happened because of the modifications. Why? Why so many modifications, right? Because it's simply overbuilt for the city of Newburgh. It's simply overbuilt. Our code can't handle it. Why can't our code handle it? They they talked about that they've made their density within the code. No, that was a modification. That was another modification for in order for them to build that level of density in the first place. So the city of Newburgh repeatedly grants modifications to the N M C on the same parcel to be developed. It creates a pattern and sets a precedent for the future. Additionally, it casts suspicion on the relationship of the city of Newburgh and that developer, as well as giving the appearance that the N M C is ineffective, relegating it to be nothing more than a loose guideline subject to the city planner's ambition. This does not instill public trust. We have a decent municipal code. Do some requirements need updated and refined? Yes, they do. Has the city of Newburgh acknowledged this? Yes. Yes, they did. In a memorandum dated October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, it lists twenty-one items to consider for updating in the development code. Item number two on the list is annexation criteria. This update should include mechanisms that will hold developers accountable to the citizens of Newburgh. Public trust should never be taken for granted. Thank you.
Any questions from commissioners? Uh, Ms. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
So, um, I'm sympathetic to your plight, and I applaud all the time you've put into this, but I'm going to be critical.
Okay.
Just a second. So imagine, if you will, the the slide we had earlier.
Right.
And so I'm going to use that as a mental image for how that was. So we had building here.
Maybe we could put it up.
I didn't want to put too much pressure on face. Okay, so we had all this, and we have the existing stuff. So that's what's known as a fait accompli. While I sympathize with what's what's happened in the process you've outlined since two thousand and seven. Yeah, that's that's actually a good picture there. So so all this is in there.
Right.
And it's not going out.
I I agree. Correct.
Okay. So as you say, development's going to happen.
Yes.
So the the only thing we have to do is decide to that level for that area. The rest of it is.
It's done.
Fait accompli, as you say. So we also have the competing interest of, okay, we we do have density requirements. These do meet the density requirements, and I'm kind of going there, as you saw with with the wall requirement. But to deny everything is going to be difficult based upon a lot of the objections you've raised. And especially since I agree, without without going through the exact notification processes, it could be construed as that, but since they're withdrawing uh, uh, that particular part of the parking requirement, you know, we're not, that's kind of a moot point.
I do understand that, however.
So I guess my question is, is what would you see as the ideal situation for the part of this particular development that we can actually do something about?
Okay, that's so easy. It's building one. It's building one A three. Okay, if you make that building smaller and you give an increased setback to the A one property, you're not going to have the issues with parking. Maybe they can have some full-size parking spaces, more of them anyway. You have space to put in a vegetative buffer. See that tiny line? Vegetative buffer. What does that mean? I mean, how far is that?
Which which line you refer?
Built the property line of Crestview Crossing and building number one A, go up. Yes, what's that space between that building and that property line?
Uh, I'm sure they'll tell us.
It's very small. Okay, you see, it's about the width of a parking spot.
Right.
Right, so you can see it's very small. So our Doug Freeze Doug fir tree is going to go in there? No, our poplar is going to go there? I doubt it. I doubt it. That's a very small space.
This is just an idea.
I I agree. So my thought is, you make that building, you simply make it smaller. Okay, fine, keep your three stories. Make it smaller. Move it away from the R one property.
Right.
That would make me very happy. Or put up some other multifamily structures in there. But increase the buffer that was promised to us time after time that keeps disappearing with every meeting that we have. Give us our buffer back. Okay, and then we'll resolve the issues with parking and possible lighting and possibly not have to come forward and have any more modifications. I hope we don't, but I'll be here if we do.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Thank you.
And and thank you, Jason. Yeah, it was good to finally get to a point that addressed this, because a lot of the testimony seemed on sour grapes at the developer and are the wages um, for the commercial. They didn't really have anything to relate to this, so I'm glad we're getting to a point of order on the actual project, because as Jason pointed out, um, the development is approved. And there was the single, you know, the single-family, you know, the the stack houses, and now this is a modification to the multifamily, which increases the affordability. Granted, there's still not a lot of affordability for low-income workers, but you don't get that by denying more units. So I'm glad we got got at least to a point there. And now we'll continue on with the testimony. And let's call up James. Let me throw this on here. Yeah, James Tingle. And we'll go back to the five-minute testimony and just state your name for the record.
The west side parking lot will become my backyard.
Can you state your name into the mic and where you live?
My name is Jim Yingle. I live at three eight one one Coffee Lane. So for those of you familiar with the area, and you drove it, there's a trail back there that comes through the park. I'm the last house I'm in with a trail there. Where they want to put their west side parking lot there? That will pretty much become what I'll look at over the green space of the park. Yes, sir. And then you see how the lot splits there? And the trail goes out to the street. Right? So when they run out of the parking, which they already have too little of, I wonder where everybody will park and what trail they'll walk. We already have an overflow of parking in our residential area now. I'm just a couple of houses over from these folks. Yeah. I don't want anything to happen to those trees. That was one of the biggest appeals that drove me to buying the house two years ago with the chance of the development and the promise of single-family housing. I certainly don't want to lose the trees. I don't want to look at the parking lot. I don't want the lights. And I certainly don't want a three-story building blocking Parrot Mountain and Shaheila Mountain. That's about all I have to say about this. I just want you guys to know that I strongly urge you to reject it. I completely support what she said. I have nothing to add. Such a thorough presentation. You're amazing. And I think you'll find more of that tonight in our crowd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And next, let's have Beth Bernier.
Just as a reminder to everyone, when you come up and speak, uh, allow the commission time to ask you any questions if they happen to have some, just before you hit and run. Thank you.
Beth Bernier, eighteen eleven, D O L A. I'm not much more. I can say the least of it. She covered it amazingly, except that I can reiterate what they say. They're beautiful, beautiful, extraordinary pictures of what the world's going to look like, what they promise. The pictures, one of them that they actually had up there, was my house that you're looking at. That the green space that we were told that we have, that the next section's going to have is non-existent. The wall they're saying they're willing to build and give that space to the homes that are there. We were told the same thing. And we're still waiting. Our house is the one that has the four homes, the dead end. Oh, but the people that live there now, that that street, that dead-end street, that's that's okay. That's extra parking, apparently. But that's my house. And their measurements is from property to property, not property line. A portion of the building to the next building. That is your space. I can tell you this, because their last home basically lives in my backyard. Because the space that we have, their buffer is this small little area that's not taken care of. That's what they're referring to as my buffer. We asked about a wall even before all this started. Yeah, we're going to get a ball. We are going to get a green space. We're going to get a wall. There's going to be space before they're building. The same thing that they're feeding the next group, the same thing that they're sitting here telling you, oh, yeah, we're going to do the wall. We sat here before they started. And they promised us there was going to be a green space. There was going to be a wall. We were going to have our area and our privacy. My picture of my home is up there on what they showed. There is no space. There is no green space. There is no wall. So what they're telling you guys, they've been here before. They said the same thing, and my picture of my home is up there to show it was a lie. And now they're selling it. Oh, this is what we're going to do for the next group. The homes are going to be bigger and taller. But that's okay, because magically we're going to give them the respect that they deserve. Really? Come to my house. Two thousand and eighteen, drive that area today. There is nothing. They don't care. And what they're doing to everybody that they've already done, they're going to keep on doing, because they won't live there. They wouldn't put their family in what they're building. They wouldn't do that to their family or friends. That's how much they care. But thank you, guys, for caring.
Okay, thank you. And next, let's go with Keith Leonard. Is Keith still online?
Speak up, Keith.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Audio is working great tonight. Thank you. Um, affordable housing. Affordable housing is a term I hear thrown around a lot as a planner. And and just to reiterate, I live at two one two eight East Pennant, Newburgh. And I was the planner that saw this original development through the the review process. So I I hear the term affordable housing thrown around a lot. Um, and it kind of sickens me. I also have three kids. And when I hear a developer say, hey, we're going to provide twelve units of affordable housing, and they they put it in writing, and then because they didn't have a conditional approval, which was reviewed by the community development director, and we, I didn't think that we needed one. Now they can just walk away from it. I completely disagree with this. They put it in writing. You don't have to approve this conditional use permit or this major modification to what was already approved. They can just go ahead and go forward with what was approved. So the developer now blames the city for an excise tax. And so I would ask the city then, given the blame being put on the city, have you collected enough of an excise tax to provide twelve units of affordable housing to our community? As far as relaxation, I can give you one relaxation they already received. You may not have even realized. When you drive into that traffic circle, you'll notice that there is nothing but cement dividing the two. When you drive into that traffic circle, you'll notice that there is nothing but cement dividing the two. Traffic lanes. It was supposed to be landscape, but they didn't have to do it. Though they've already gotten one relaxation. And then I I would like to 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 say, could could the developer? Share their information, their return on investment? From their pro forma, which I'm sure they've already ran and said, hey, we could sell these individual lots, but. Let's go ahead and produce a whole bunch of multiple family and just collect it over ten years and then sell it. For a huge profit. Sound good? JT Smith has plenty of money. They can provide our community with twelve units of affordable housing. It's ridiculous for them to blame the city. Come on. Do some checking. How much is this company worth? As you can tell, I'm pretty bent out of shape because I was lied to. Our community was lied to. And now you have Jesse up there saying that we're working with the plant, the the parts district. And trust us. We're gonna have a lot of lot of lot of lot of landscaping over here. Get it in writing. Because the staff report says you have to get everything written down as a condition of approval. In order to see a developer just keep their simple promises. How about this? Revert back to the original zoning, which is actually see. The commi- commercial, the the front along ninety nine, then you have R two. And then you have R one against the 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 county. It was described in the staff re- presentation, there's only R two. There's also R one. What I would suggest is that. They just go ahead. And build what they were granted. In two thousand and eighteen. You know, there was plenty of sidewalk. Now there's gonna be a whole lot of parking lot. That doesn't do a whole lot for. Active recreation, does it? Think about how the all the residents of that suburb could have been walking around on those 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 sidewalks. But instead. Is a dead end into a parking lot. And I feel for the residents who live in the existing homes of butt this development. I mean, where's 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 the elevation perspective that shows the top of that building going down to the property? That 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 have existed there since, you know, what, the nineteen seventies or sixties? I can't remember the 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 date in which these. These homes were built. Just keep your promise. Go forward with what you promised our community. There's no reason for this added density. And like I said, I I would just like to ask. Come on, JT Smith, dump clean. Tell us how much you charge for a one bedroom now. Or a two bedroom or a three bedroom in your existing apartment communities. You have several here. In fact, there's one that just has bark dust blown between the the curb and the and the sidewalk. So I guess we can expect more of that sort of great landscaping in our community. That's all I have to say. Good night.
Thank you, Keith. Any questions? Okay, let's move on to Angela Barker Diaz.
Most slaughtered I've had my name.
Why apologize? Stay your name for the record, please.
Angela Barkus Dras. Thank you for hearing me. I live at four four oh nine Northeast Bird Haven Loop in the Oxford Lake Estates. We have been working with the Crestview Crossing project. From the beginning, in order to protect our fifteen year Aquifer recharge zone. I am opposed to the change of use for this project to increase phase two from one ten. Single cottages units to one hundred and ninety seven multifamily. I would like to state three problems with approving the increase in density. One. Management of water on the property. The current property is built on wetlands. The developer had to create collecting ponds for the water created on the property as well as wetlands. With the last big rainstorm. That we had with the deluge of water. There was a modification to the northwest corner of the property to add another French drain and a step. To manage the water currently on that prob- process. Current. Clearly, the current state of development isn't handling the water situation and sinking another pond under asphalt isn't a small s- smart solution. The added concrete and cars will put more stress on the potential quality of water at the well site currently on the Crestview Crossing project. We are only three years into a ten year monitoring schedule. Two, parking. Newburgh has few public transit options for residents to commute to work outside of Newburgh. Therefore, there will be more cars required for more units. The developer is offering more asphalt to handle more spots for additional units, but there is no on-street parking anywhere close to phase two. Unless you go into the current neighborhood. Who uses their own roads. For parking. Three, Newburgh livability. This development will be the first visual impression as you enter Newburgh from Rex Hill. I encourage you not to approve the congestion that will result if multifamily housing replaces the one ten. Single family cottages that were originally approved. The original proposal provided a total living area of a hundred ninety five thousand one hundred twenty square feet. The proposed. Adding eighty seven more units. Will cut thirty thousand four hundred fifty nine square feet of livable space. In conclusion, I respectfully request you oppose the modification to the original plan. Let the first impression of Newburgh as a great place to grow. Be a good one and leave it the way we originally welcomed it. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Any questions at all? Okay, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and let's um, let's take a ten minute break. Give everybody a chance, stretch your legs and use the facilities or whatever, and we'll reconvene at nine forty. Okay, continuing on with our public testimony, I'd like to invite Vicky Shepherd up.
Okay, I'm Vicky Shepherd. I live on Benjamin Road. The new development Crestview Greens will be the development in front of my house. And I have to say. From the very beginning, whenever this these projects started, I was at the very first meeting. I'm also probably the biggest pain in the butt that they've got, because I'm the one that. Reported the wetlands and saved those wetlands that they now have. So that's kind of where I was. So that being said. I'm opposed to this. So I'll just read what I've got. Oh, my goodness. I really do hope you take a hard look at what is happening in this area. In a little more than a one mile area, you are considering. Or have already approved four hundred and sixteen multifamily units, otherwise known as apartments. The Crestview Crossing developer wants to add a hundred and ninety six units. To their already fifty one built units, which makes a total of two hundred and forty seven apartments. You have already approved a total of a hundred and seventeen apartments at Meadowbrook, which is on Springbrook Road. The planning department has an application for twenty eight apartments at Springbrook and Hayworth. And another twenty four apartments at the still to be built Crestview Greens. If all is approved, the total will be four hundred and sixteen apartments. How much traffic can be added to this one mile area? And how much traffic can the area handle? I was stuck in traffic in the middle of Rex Hill on a Wednesday at four fifteen. Because traffic could not make it through the light at Crestview Crossing and Springbrook. Now you are going to add more traffic? Density may meet the criteria, but what about overbuilding and the traffic? The number four hundred and sixteen does not take into account the many homes and cottages that are built. And being built at Crestview Crossing and the soon to be built Crestview Greens Development. Of course, all of the developers have submitted their traffic studies. When you look at each study and development individually, there should not be a problem. But when you consider and add together the traffic study numbers in this one mile area, there is an abundance of problems. I am asking, are you positive the existing infrastructure is adequate? Newburgh does not have a great transportation system to help move people around. Most families have two vehicles for work and school. Are you sure there is enough parking in this apartment complex? I see in the report, the parking ratio is one point five vehicles for a two bedroom apartment. I have never seen a half a car, have you? Where are all these people and their visitors going to park? I've seen in the application for Crestview Greens where the overflow parking is allowed on the streets. Or will they park on the side streets across from the park? I hope this is not an option, and if not, where are they going to park? My last concern, looking to the future, are these multifamily homes and apartments slash apartments prepared for adequate EV charging stations? Or will they be limited in their ability? That should be a consideration for every new development. I strongly urge you to not approve the development change. Thank you.
Um, thank you. And definitely, I I. Happy to hear the, you know, when everyone speaks up for the EV chargers. Me person myself. But any questions from commissioners?
Thanks.
I just like the comment that I do believe the applicant has mentioned the EV charging stations for this, in this plan already.
Right. And you could, you kind of have to ask yourself how many, because as they push towards more EVs, EVs, there a few is not. I know.
I'm sure the applicant would be happy to answer that question in the rebuttal.
Okay.
Well, I may have missed a commissioner. There was a state law that was passed, and so. EVs charging for multifamily projects is now required. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's based upon the number of parking spaces provided. There's a number of EV. Infrastructure that you have to install to serve those spaces in the future. Doesn't mean they're EV ready. I just gotta put the infrastructure in. Piping, ducting, conduit.
Right, and I suspect that the applicant will have that particular number rather than just that, so. No pressure.
Thank you, and. At this point, I need to stop the meeting for just a moment. And speak to fellow commissioners. Due to our. Rules and regs, we can't start a meeting after ten PM. Without the consent of the commissioners. And so we have a few options. Mr. Rock's mentioned, we could have a meeting on June twenty second that we could do continuances to. Or we could try to plug on some more tonight. Any thoughts?
Yes, yeah, we'll definitely finish this one.
So yeah, the chair is referring to the the next three items we have on our agenda.
Yes. So, Mr. Chair. If it is the desire of the commission to continue the three hearings that we have not started yet. I would say you would need to announce an official recess of this meeting. In order to address continuing the others, and then you would need to open. The hearing for each one individually. Don't need to read the legal language, but you would need to open each one. Ask for a motion to continue to June twenty second at seven PM at the Public Safety Building. Close that one, then go to the next one, do the same thing, and then to the next one.
Sounds good. So at this time, let's, the public hearing. Testimony is closed with exception of the rebuttal that we will get to when we come back. And we'll officially recess while we go ahead and take care of business to meet our requirement by ten o'clock. Do I need to ask for extensions and everything on each one?
Yeah, first of all, you need to open the hearing for the CUP. You do not need to do the extensions at this point. You can just ask for a motion to continue to June twenty second at seven PM at the Public Safety Building.
Just for clarification, we're gonna continue the current one. We're only asking for the ones that we have not started talking about.
Exactly. We said we're coming up on our ten o'clock requirement there.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffith.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to. Open. The hearing for CUP twenty three zero zero one, a conditional use permit approval to use a single family dwelling. As a vacation rental home on three hundred West Third Street, and ask for a motion for continuance.
Mr. Chair, we continue CUP twenty three dash zero zero one to June twenty second at seven PM at the Public Safety Building here.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Sharon Capri. Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Musall.
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
Thank you. That meeting is continued until June twenty second at seven PM. In the Public Service Building. Thank you. Now I'd like to open. Variance twenty three dash zero 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 one, a request for variance to reduce the minimum number of required off speed. Of street parking spaces. I'm sorry. For that next hearing? Well, let me open it. And you're talking on the vacation home? Okay, yeah, we're we're gonna open and that, and we're gonna request. You know, gonna entertain a motion for a request for continuance. And yes, per. Our guidelines and rules, we're not allowed to begin a new meeting without the. Consent of the Planning Commission, and we're we're able to ask for continuance. Until, and and we've added a second meeting in June to be able to take care of all of these.
So you you don't need to speak tonight? We we don't have a choice to continue it or not. We have to.
Your other option then would be to your July thirteenth.
Would our July meeting work for you?
July thirteenth, sir. Okay, and we're we're good for the docket on that one?
You have. So. You already have. Four hearings scheduled that night. Quasi judicial, this would make your fifth. The continued one would be the first on the agenda.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we continue variants VAR twenty three dash zero zero one. To July thirteenth at seven PM at the Public Safety Building.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. A vote, please.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Musall.
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously, so that is moved to July thirteenth at seven PM here in the Public Safety Building. Close that. And we'll open. M A M D three two three dash zero zero one, a major modification of CUP two dash. Ninety for a shelter to add eight additional beds. And a design review for an accessory modular building and parking determination at six fifteen. North College Street and entertain a motion for a continuance on that as well.
Chair, just just before we go, is that applicant here right now for that M and D? Is June twenty second okay with you? Are you able to attend that meeting? We're, but this is gonna be going for at least another hour, and it's probably. And so it's unlikely we'll be able to get to that tonight.
A continuance on this one would be to June twenty second.
Right, and is that enough time for the for, so what what did you say, July first? Okay. Thank you. Uh, uh, you already opened it?
Yeah, just waiting for a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we uh continue M A M D three-two-three dash zero zero one M I S C one-two-three dash zero zero nine to June twenty second, seven PM at the Public Safety Building.
Thank you, and a second.
It'll be the second.
Be the second, right, then.
Where are we gonna come? Uh, that meeting should go relatively quickly, I suspect.
Um, Commissioner Quinn, a second.
Hey, have a motion and a second, a vote please.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jason Dale.
Yes.
Laney Quinn.
Yes.
Jeff Musall.
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yes.
Mike Griffiths.
Yes.
Avery Hansen.
Yes.
That motion passes, we'll go ahead and close that hearing. So now let's go back and reopen M M A M D three-two-three.
Point of words, P U D one-eight dash zero zero one and CUP one-eight dash zero zero four.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, yeah, we'll go ahead and and reopen P U D eighteen dash zero zero one and conditional use permit CUP eighteen dash zero zero four. And this time I'd like to um ask the applicant up for rebuttal.
All right. So I think first we want to address uh sort of the condition right at the property line, and then we'll kind of zoom our way out. Um, there was testimony regarding the uh the distance between the house and the structure, and we want to state that that is eighty feet from structure to structure from the multifamily to the nearest residential home. Um, the multifamily homes will be three stories, that is what was approved for the single-family homes that were proposed as well. Uh, the height is the same for the proposed buildings as it was in the original proposal. Um, the setback required is actually five feet in the code. We are proposing a twenty-two foot setback, and that's just from the very closest part of the building. The bu- building does step back away from the property line a little bit as well as it uh moves into the property. That area will be landscaped. Um, there was a wall built along the northern property line as part of the agreement, there was never a proposed wall along the western boundary. There is a stormwater line along that property boundary that requires a fifteen-foot public storm easement. Um, so that is a fifteen-foot setback between the home and the property line on the northwest home. Uh, there was no density modification requested as part of this application or the previous application. The conditional use permit allows uh we requested a conditional use permit to allow residential and a commercial that's requested. Um, and that is applicable to this application as well. The applied density was applied by the zoning or by the planning uh department for that zone. Uh, we did provide a solar access diagram that is representative of the city's code for solar access and the building does meet the solar access requirements. Regarding the type of commercial in the commercial zone, you know, this project isn't applicable to the the commercial that's already built, but it is retail commercial, that is what is zoned for that. Or what is an applicable use for that zone, an appropriate use for that zone. I think there is, there was a comment about the parking lot adjacent to the the park property. We understand that there are homes adjacent to that park, but there is a good fifty feet of park between our property line and the nearest home. It's, there's no intention to park on the park property or bark, block the trails with parking. Um, the trail connects into our sidewalk and will provide a connection to that trail.
Oh, excuse me. Uh, what about lighting for that particular trail and and the the adjoining uh parking, because when in our experience, what we found is trails that go between developments like this, uh as I believe Mr. Yingle uh mentioned is it's an attraction for vacancy and things like that and kids doing things and having things well lit tends to uh deter that. So, so do you have anything in in mind for that?
So there will be lighting on site, I know there were a few questions about that, the parking lot will be lit to the city's parking standards. The buildings will have lighting down at the pedestrian level as well as, you know, personal unit lighting. Um, lighting within the park on the park trail is not something we necessarily have control over, but I know that we are working with the park on some improvements and it could be something we talk about with them. And I know we'd be happy to do that.
At at least having it on the adjoining part of your property would be a good step.
Right. Um, sorry, just making sure I hit on on a lot of these points. There was a question about whether or not the R-zone, R-one zone is on our property. The R-one zone is actually already built, that is where those R-one homes, the four single-family homes are and the storm pond, this site is specifically only R-two and C-two zone. The, with the site, we were a, there is a large corridor of wetlands and habitat that is preserved on the Crestview Crossing site and this project will provide connection over to the walking trails that are part of that preservation area and uh recreation area. Uh, the ponds provided are stormwater detention ponds, those are standard requirements of the city's uh stormwater treatment plan and they meet the city's requirements for stormwater detention. Um, as far as the traffic study, there was a comment about the number of apartment units being built in the area. Traffic studies are required to look at full plans for what is currently built and what is being proposed when they do generate traffic uh impact analysis uh documents. As part of this project, there will be fewer peak hour trips, but an overall an increase in trips. It was found that the traffic network, the street network could support the increase in trips. Um, and as a note, C-two zone does um commercial uses do generate more traffic than multifamily, so as the zone originally stands with commercial would be a higher generation of traffic than multifamily would be. Uh, EV charging stations, so as Doug mentioned, we are required to make ready and provide conduit for forty percent of the parking stalls and we will be doing that.
And what does that number equal?
Uh, seventy-eight parking stalls.
Out of how many again, sorry, refresh my memory? Four, what was it? Two ninety-five, thank you.
Oh, Aaron, did you one ninety-five? Okay, more than that.
So, so what are the two numbers again, sorry?
It's, it's two hundred and ninety-five parking stalls are being provided.
Right.
Percent of those will be EV, one hundred and eighteen stalls will be EV-ready.
Very well, thank you.
Again, for the record, Jamie Housley, attorney for the applicant here. Um, I think to address uh the concern, I think that Commissioner Dale was going along with the the additional screening. Uh, what we would propose would be a condition of approval that we would add a Leland Cypress or similar fast-growing a tree, um ten foot of center along the west and north of building one. Um, with the intent of in three and five years, that should create a significant uh screen that I think would be be much taller than a wall that would be built uh on the northern end that we already did. Um, so that would be an added condition. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to touch on was that there there was a a talk about again, the 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 critical op for charge, and obviously we worked, you know, really hand in hand with uh uh neighborhood to the north and coming up with an agreement and, you know, we're 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 well within that, still monitoring that. Um, but as stated earlier in our earlier testimony, partly what we're doing with this project is constructing a stormwater facility on here that's basically treating seventy two acres of um property from the west that is currently not treated stormwater, and we are doing that on our property, which is a benefit uh to the entire region, so it will help the situation not uh make anything worse by making this change.
Uh, before you continue, could you give me an approximate dimension of the of the uh length of the line of trees you're proposing for your uh amendment? I would, because I I want to get, I want to get the dimension written down, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so I think, I think what uh my client is suggesting would be uh along that northern boundary of building one, uh and then down uh along the front edge of building one alongside uh the parking lot area there uh that we've modified uh adjacent to the park.
Thank you.
I don't know how many linear feet that is up, but um I I think the condition being crafted accordingly.
Yes, I agree. Yes.
Right. So, if you, are you able to move up a little bit? So see that bump out on the far north?
Yeah.
There, that's twenty-two feet from the property line and the building steps back from that bump out, so it's anywhere from twenty-two to thirty feet.
So, so let's, let's say uh along building one to the north edge. Uh, I believe that's parking in those was a four spaces above building one, I can I can't tell for sure. But let's say to building five, how about that, are the applicant okay with that?
That's fine, we're good.
Very good. I'm sorry. Well, you're working with the park on this project, right? There we go.
I'd also make a request that there are commercially available trees that don't take years to grow that you purchase and plant trees of a substantial size now, assuming we get to that point.
Well, I say, I think that's why we're trying to craft a condition, the Leland Cypress or something similar. I I think what what we got was we want to create a screen and create created as fast as possible. So I I think having the flexibility to to determine what's available, especially when you're talking that many trees, that's.
Just as a point of order, this is kind of a bit of an aside, but they do, the landscape architects generally tell us that a smaller caliber tree, while smaller and seems less significant, does generally plant better and doesn't fail as often as when you transplant a larger tree.
I have some history with uh transplanting larger trees, they are commercially available, they're used in many developments. I, it, uh, and again, this is an assumption that we get to that point. I would prefer that whatever trees are planted are already of a size that block, that they are available.
Uh, Commissioner Griffiths may may insert something here, there's an, there's an issue of timing and that they could plant the trees almost immediately and have them getting to the point where they're almost tall enough by the time the building's done. And so that would accomplish the same thing.
Okay, I didn't hear that they would grow that fast.
Yeah.
They would.
Because it takes a while to get to get buildings done, I know.
I had um two clarifying questions by chance, um just based on your, what you're saying in your rebuttal. I was hoping you could either repeat or elaborate a little bit. The two things I noticed I was wondering about, you said the um, did you say you decided that the buildings were going to be the same height as the original request? Could you cite which one you were referring to there?
Sure, so as part of Crestview Green, the overall P U D, we requested a height modification to allow three-story buildings. Um, and that height allowance was actually the forty-five feet.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight feet, sorry, and that included the commercial area. Um, these buildings won't be forty-eight feet, they are proposed to be thirty-seven and I think a half, thirty-seven and a half feet. And that is what was proposed, these brown homes shown on the original drawing, those were proposed to be three stories as well. And these will also be three stories.
Okay, thank you, and um in regards to your traffic study, did you say that this would not have any impact on the peak travel times?
Um, so this will increase the number of total trips from the site. Um, the way traffic studies measure trips, though, there is a peak AM hour and a peak PM hour, and those are uh when the most trips happen over an hour on the site. Um, this would reduce the overall peak trips during those high-demand peak hours. So usually the morning commute, the afternoon commute, these would have fewer peak trips than a single-family home. But overall, over the course of a full twenty-four hour day, there will be more trips total. If that makes sense, traffic studies are a little.
Just to point a a question on that, so the traffic study, so they're basically saying like single families or more day commuters and apartments might be more shift workers, is that kind of what they're saying?
The assumption from the, you know, the traffic, it comes from the the traffic I T manual.
Okay.
Yeah, and the actual numbers are, I think we, there'll be a reduction in about thirteen peak hour AM. That's the morning commute, and then a twenty-three reduction in PM peak hour trips by the approval.
Is that in comparison to the single-family dwellings?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Uh, Doug, did I see you were trying to put something in there?
Um, so Jamie mentioned uh the Leland Cypress at ten feet on center. Um, you might want to consider what's the minimum height that you want, a five-foot tree, six-foot tree.
Mm-hmm. Six, six foot's funny, I think, it's a good start.
I'm a little confused with that, so you're you're saying, you're saying that Leland Cypress starts at six feet. And by the time it grows, it's thirty feet, so we want to to get the thirty-ish, you know?
No, they're saying how um, how big do they want them to be when we plant them?
Right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, you want them planted at six foot. And and like you said, with the with the thing with it growing pretty quickly and with the building taking time, that's probably adequate.
With the assumption that a six-foot um tree would be planted, I I'm wondering if we did approve this this evening, when building would actually start and and would the tree actually get to the height in time to to um camouflage the building?
Right, so the site improvement, I think, would happen prior to the building being built, correct? Right, so they would be, the trees would be installed prior to receiving permits for the buildings.
Sounds like none of us really know that much about the growth of the trees, so I think the language should be that whatever is planted is professionally anticipated to grow to a certain height by a certain time. Not, let's do six feet and cross our fingers and hope it's big enough when they move into the apartments.
Commissioner Capri, I, the the particular Leland Cypress that I have growing in my side yard is, I planted eight years ago and it's thirty feet tall now. So, I mean, we're not talking about a few years' time to grow thirty feet. So it'll be at least five years to get to a decent height to actually act as any kind of a barrier.
Well, if Leland Cypress doesn't happen to be the right thing, I'm sure we can figure something. It's the, it's the, it's the screening issue, and so whatever gets there is what works.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to do this the right way, Jesse Nettie, J T Smith Companies. Um, I I want to be clear, we're we're wanting to provide some sort of additional screen above and beyond what we previously were showing, so we want to enhance it some. There's, there's going to be some time where the building's going to be visible, there was some talk about walls, things like that. This starting out, if we start these minimum height at six feet and if we install them prior to the building permit, there'll be some time where the where the buildings are visible, but the intent is that in the very near future, being fast-growing trees, that we're providing much better screening of the buildings than any sort of concrete block wall would ever.
Correct.
That's, that's, that was our.
I think that's a better solution, it's more, it's natural, you know, people look, people, you know. I think that's a better solution, it's more, it's natural, you know, people look, people, you know, see trees, they don't think, oh, it's, you know. Dividing everybody off or something like that, I, I think that's my, my, my opinion, a better solution, but.
Again, I think there's a lot of guessing here, I would prefer, again, assuming this would go forward, that we have concrete language. This is whatever kind of tree it is, will be of a certain height. Professionally anticipated to be of a certain height before occupancy. Because I think, I say, you know, what kind of tree, and this will do six feet or ten feet, and you know, in a couple of years, it ought to be this. I don't know, I think, and we don't wanna have some uh confusion in the future. So I think it needs to be kind of solid that a professional has to. Uh in their professional opinion, sta- state that the type of tree planted will be of this height, should be of this height. Barring some natural disaster uh by the time uh the first tenant moves in.
Do you have any suggestions for the type of language that would cover? Mister Housley, Housley, was it?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I. I, I think it's like a, a timing question. Cause there's no, I mean, there's no guarantee that a, a tree can hit a certain height by occupancy, so I, I think the way to look at it is. Again, prior to building permit being issued, uh the applicant will. Plant a, a Leland Cypress or other similar tree. Um and we can have a specified height, a minimum of six feet high. That will, uh and that tree is, will be expected to reach a height of um thirty feet, once it's installed. And the hope again is uh if that's done prior to building permit, it's in the ground, it's, it's growing. Um obviously, there's a lot of site work that has to happen here before one. Uh foundation gets poured and nails start, you know, happening. Um and again, it would be hopeful that um by the time the, the residents are starting to move there, the, the tree is of. Uh a, a good height and eventually it'll reach that. Um, you know, thirty feet.
Uh refresh my memories, is there gonna be an HOA or some sort of organization that oversees this property? And I, we need to have it into this HOA that they are responsible for the care and feeding of these particular trees, so they don't just die.
Yeah, we will, um, we do have an HOA, we will amend the.
We'll have a, we'll have a property management team that will manage.
Close enough.
And, and we can, we can provide a uh a maintenance screen. I just, I wanna make the point, though, that tying it to occupancy is, is somewhat irrelevant, just because. Building's gonna be there, and it being there, whether you have somebody in it or not, whether you can see it.
I was personally thinking about something like one year of completion, something like that, possibly. If that's enough time for it to get that tall? Cause you, cause it's, it's a couple, couple of years to, to, by the time you get it, uh. By the time you get permitting process and get the thing done and erected and all that kind of thing, that's rough, I'm guessing twenty-four months, eighteen, something like that. And then, you know, a year after that, it's, should be close.
Again, I think we're trying, I don't wanna spend all night on the trees, but uh. We can uh legalize this language to say that i- in the opinion of a professional arborist. We, they expect whatever tree gets planted to be of a certain height by a certain time. It doesn't necessarily have to be, oh, no one can move into the apartment, cause it didn't, you know, it's a foot short. But we can make this a little bit more solid by bringing in a professional arborist and saying, in their opinion. In the absence of some natural disaster or whatever, this tree is expected to be this height by this date. And if it's not, you know, if it's not, that doesn't mean you can't occupy the apartment, but at least we have the opinion of a professional. Who said, yep, you plant this now, then in two years, it ought to be this.
Okay, I can work with that. Um how about, how about this, prior to building permits being issued, Leland Cypress or other similar tree. Um will be planted that is expected to reach a height of thirty feet uh. With, within five, five or six years, um certified by an arborist.
And um as far as the, the height thing, um. The, if you built a wall, it wouldn't be thirty feet.
You would, you would not wanna be a thirty-foot wall.
What would, um, if you built a wall, how, how high would it be?
I think we built a ten-foot wall, six-foot wall on the, the north end.
So a six-foot tree is gonna be taller than the wall, pretty straight, straight away. But yeah, yeah, you'll have room between, but, but they could, uh, I don't know, can you stagger a row? You know, the staggered away there, you know, they're planted. Yeah, yeah.
We can put in a six-foot fence in addition to the. With the exception of where the trail connections are.
May I continue? We get there? Um, I'm getting really turned around on numbers and the time, so I, I'm gonna ask another question, I do apologize, I'd like to point out, I don't think it's necessarily relevant as how long it takes. Trees to grow, or when the occupancy is the point, is that, once people learn, it's not irrelevant, because then you're looking at other people, so it doesn't. I wouldn't say that that wasn't a relevant point, I think that's very relevant to the people who are already living there, both in who is coming into the place. And the property prior to occupancy, but given the time and the amount of parking spaces and tree heights, I've just uh wanted to clarify. Was it accurate, I believe it was um Terry's point that, that. Was the original, the prior proposal, two hundred and ninety-nine units, and this one was three hundred and eighty-six, was that?
So the, the ori- the original P U D approval was two hundred and ninety-nine units. Uh as built, it was three hundred, because we added a new single-family house on the north uh east corner.
One of those four that were there?
N- no, on the other, the other side, so it's. Like. As you continue down the road, so it was originally three hundred, and, and now with this request, it would go to three hundred and eighty-six units. So it's an addition of eighty-six units from what uh was actually. Approved and built.
Okay, so that was relatively accurate, um, just any particular reason you went from three hundred to three hundred and eighty-six? What was the motivation?
Well, the, the motivation really was that we felt that we had too much of the same type of product there, um. We're not as big of fans of these skinny, tall, single-family homes as we once were. And um we believe that more efficient buildings. With bigger space between them that provides more open space is, is a better product. And not everybody can afford to purchase these types of homes, and it's easier to go for.
So less of those ones and more just the complexes, was what?
Yes.
Yeah, cause if you can look at, look at that site, for instance, um you, you would see the single-family that Jesse's referring to. And the ma- the massing that that even has on that um western boundary compared to uh the, the building that we're proposing. Um adjacent to that, which is, which is smaller and set further back from the property line.
Thank you, I've, we had a little turnaround, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
It, who is gonna own the apartment complex, cause I mean, I appreciate all the altruistic statements being made, but money is the bottom line. If the builder or the developer is going to now retain ownership of the apartments. That's a significant amount of money that will be coming in. To that person, as opposed to the sale of single-family homes, whether they're tall, three stories or not. I just don't, again, I'm not trying to challenge anybody's uh veracity here, but. We're avoiding the elephant in the room, this is about money. And that, that's gonna make a ton of money uh to rent all these apartments, the original proposal were houses that would be sold, that's the end of it. Now, we're gonna get monthly income from how many apartments, I. I, I just don't think we, we should. Leave that topic off the table.
I don't think that the finances are relevant to the approval criteria.
The finances may not be, but if you're given reasons here tonight, why you're making the change, then I wanna make sure we get all the reasons.
Well, I'll, I'll point out that we still have over nine million dollars in debt on the property right now. Before we build this, and it's gonna take tens of millions of dollars to go build this, that we're still gonna, we're gonna have to service that debt. So, yes, there, there will be income coming in, but it won't pay for itself for a long, long, long time.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public testimony. No, 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 the, the applicant rebuttal is the last one, so per, per order, okay? Okay, and now final comments from staff and recommendation?
Staff recommends that the planning commission move to adopt planning commission order two zero two three dash zero nine. As amended with the additional conditions of approval, which approves the requested major modification to planned unit development. P U D eighteen dash zero 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 one. And conditional use permit C U P eighteen dash zero 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 four. With attached conditions of approval and exhibit B and to be as added per the amendment.
Clay, you have a good copy of the amendment we just discussed there?
I'm gonna be going back and looking through the recordings as well.
Okay, and uh I'm sure Mister Housley'd be happy to share it with you. If, uh whatever procedure we need to do to make that happen, I, I want, I want that in the record for what we, whatever we decide.
The chair will assign, will sign the modified and, and official version.
Yes, so the, the process, whatever decision you make tonight, and if you add a condition to it, we will go back, listen to the audio. We will talk. How Clay talk with Jamie, Jamie can. Scan and send over what he's got written, and we'll compare them both, and then we'll go in and make the adjustment.
I just want to be very clear.
The conditions before an order gets signed.
Okay, well, with the staff recommendation, we'll move on to um. Planning commission deliberation.
Sure, I'll start. Um, I can't go back to two thousand and seven, was it, with the voter's pamphlet and what was put in there? But clearly, there's a very long and established history uh that includes a lot of bad blood. One of the things that bothers me, and I mentioned this at the main meeting, it's disappointing it wasn't addressed. The developer has an option to submit this in a manner that does not require another modification. Essentially, you could have tied our hands, because it met everything. But you didn't take that opportunity, and yet you come before the planning commission again, requesting what seems like an endless modification. It really is disappointing that you just couldn't submit the proposal in a manner that we would have essentially had to say yes to. It. It, it just doesn't, you know, a lot of times, we don't have discretion, but you're offering us the opportunity to have discretion. And given the history that I'm hearing here, uh it's very disappointing that we didn't take the opportunity here to present something. That at the very least would have been a slam dunk.
Anyone else? Um, yeah, this, this one, this one is a tough one, a lot of, a lot of good discussion on each end, um. Um Mister Leonard's testimony was pretty compelling, but then. I also have to look at, uh, you know, kind of the facts. From the um. Developers' point of view, and, you know, I say, I, I can see arguments for both sides. And um. I can also see, um, like, um, as um Mike pointed out, you know, money. And things, but you can, you can have a money motivation and have it be for a good reason. At the same time, I think the, you know, the market has shifted and. Higher-priced houses aren't selling as good, and we are in a city that needs more affordable housing, so again. Yeah, yeah, this is a tough one, but um. In the, at the end of the day, I, I think um. In support of uh, of the motion with the uh. Tree line modifications that we discussed.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I have to agree with Mike in that. This really concerns me, that there's been a lot of promises in the past that um. Really haven't been lived up to, and that. Worries me for the future.
Uh, this is a tough one. Miss Thomas has brought back history that I'm not a part of, and here, I thought it was a gray beard on the council and just, or commission, and it's just, it's not enough. And uh I can't speak to any of that, and, and uh, uh, as I said, with uh part of it, a lot of this has already been done. A lot of this is already in, and, and what we have to decide on is essentially the difference between a lot of. Uh, single houses versus a lot of apartments. Now, one uh gets us closer to the, to the density goals that were handed down by the state, and, and the state is. Applying a lot of pressure to city staff and, and to cities all over, all over the area, and. It is a policy that's essentially contrary to the wishes of a lot of the people. The trouble we run into is that Newburgh is twenty-five thousand people. Sixty percent of people typically vote, I think, so. Assuming everybody did that, that's, uh, so we'll use a round number, fifteen thousand of those, maybe half of them against that. So you're down seven thousand five hundred people that are voting against the hundreds of thousands of people that have been voting for this stuff, and all the population centers of the state, and it's just. There's not much of a way to overcome that when you're being faced with state law, circling back to this particular application. It's tough, I mean, you, you, they say the harder compromise is that neither part is that particularly happy. And I suspect that may be the case with this particular one, but uh. Yeah, uh, the, I, I will speak to the money thing, I, I don't like it when. People start to bring up the money issue involved, because one, this is America, I thought we're here to, to make money, people, business, that's what they do. Why, why shouldn't they be able to make money doing what is they do, as long as they're within the rules, which is what we're talking about here. So I don't like to have that as a criteria, and it's not a criteria, we're not allowed to consider that in, in our deliberations, for a very good reason. And. I think with this particular one, when you add in the compromise we've added with the tree line, the other, the other issue would be, we, we're disallowed that. Building number one, and I, I don't see the justification that we could point to, to, to do that with this. So my inclination is to approve this with the addition of the tree line, and um. And I encourage anyone to, if they feel this is, is not going to be going their way, to uh take it up to the next level. And that's, cause that is your recourse in our system.
I, I agree what you're saying, uh Commissioner Dale, about the money, but when the topic is brought up by the applicant. Listing the reasons for the change, as Commissioner Quinn requested. At that point, it becomes a fair topic, and to suggest that the motivations were all about. Affordable housing or anything else without addressing that particular topic. Uh, that question and that response opens the door to talk about money, it may not be a criteria. Uh, but a lot of the things we're talking about today are not criteria.
With respect, I will counter that with this. Uh, what you're going towards on that one is the, the veracity of the client or the applicant's words, and. That's possibly a consideration, however. I, in my opinion, that goes towards um your personal opinion of the applicant, and that is another issue. That we're not particularly allowed to, to determine, it's like somebody comes in and they says, okay, well, this guy's, I don't like him, he's just, I just don't like him. He comes up here and he's got all this stuff, everything's in place, everything's within the rules, but, well, I don't like him, so sorry, you can't do it, well, I mean, how do you do that? Or, the contrary to that, somebody comes up, man, I, I really like them, they, 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 they present well, they do everything, but man, they, their presentation sucks. Everything's out of place and, and nothing's with the, but I'm gonna approve it anyway, I mean, you have both sides of that. And so I, I resist a little bit to use that as, as, as a. Uh criteria for, for us approving or disapproving something, but that's just me.
And clarify, I'm not suggesting it's a criteria, I know it is not, but we're having a discussion about a lot of things, including heights of trees that are not a criteria. I'm simply suggesting that there is a major modification on the table. Once that's on the table and reasons have been given by the applicant, why they're making the change. Then to ignore that topic does uh make me question the answer.
And fair enough, I think we're, I think we're kind of seeing the same sort of a thing, so.
Yeah, I, I think you guys are actually kind of saying the same thing, and I think it would kind of be a little naive to assume that. Um, a profit-making company didn't have a, a money incentive, they would.
Um, a profit-making company didn't have a money incentive, they would. Um, hardly be requesting a change um to lose money. Um, but that said, um, are we?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
I feel like. In. Just when you look at the two plans. The one that was approved. In twenty eighteen is much more complicit, but the. The adjoining neighborhood, it's more lifestyle-oriented, it's, it feels like it. Fits the neighborhood. The other one is turning its back on the neighborhood, literally. And I don't think you could do that, and to use the argument that you need more affordable housing. The rest of that entire complex is full of houses. I don't think that you need. Three hundred and eighty apartments right next to a residential area with a park for children to play, a playground. And and the, what's right next to the park for the playground is a bunch of asphalt. And vehicles, so um I would like to mo- make a motion to deny.
I would like to second that. Why not?
Okay, you can second that.
I would like to second that motion to deny.
Hey, we have a uh motion in a second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
No.
Laney Quinn?
No.
Jeff Musall?
No.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Mike Griffiths?
Yes.
Avery Hansen?
No.
And I apologize, I lost track of the number.
It's four noes to three yeses.
Four noes to three yeses, okay, so the motion fails and we can continue deliberation?
For my clarification purposes, I just wanted to be sure if we, if the motion passes to approve C U P. Um, is that in conjunction with all the discussions, the review of the audio and the inclusion of that? It just seems we were to do it beforehand. All of that will be a part of it if we do approve it?
Yes, um, that's correct, right? That that'll be added, then you go back and and you'll consult the council and add. Chair, I move we approve P U D one eight uh dash zero zero one and C U P one eight dash zero zero four. With the uh specified amendment uh as agreed upon earlier or discussed earlier. Uh, thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Can we get a vote, please? That was Avery.
Sharon Capri? Oh, you have to push your mic. Yes. Jason Dale?
Yes.
Laney Quinn?
Yes.
Jeff Musall?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
No.
Mike Griffiths?
No.
Avery Hansen?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes with um.
Okay, so the motion is. Four yeses and two three noes.
Okay, so so the motion passes, so we'll go ahead and close the hearing and thank everyone.